Under section four, number twenty-four, which is from the sheriff's office, purchase of three vehicles.
Okay.
And I just asked, we're gonna actually do that directly after the approval of the agenda.
Offer motion of the agenda be approved with the addition as spelled out by Ms. Daniels.
Motion in second to approve the agenda. All in favor? unanimous. All right. Mr. Pratt, good day. It's in prayer.
Ms. Pratt, God would thank you for everything that you do for us. We thank you for allowing us to be here today. We thank you for allowing us to live in Jackson County. Thank you for the people that are here. We thank you for our blessings. And we thank you for our, thank you for our known blessings and thank you for our unknown blessings. We ask that you lead God and direct us on every decision made here this morning. In Christ's name.
Thank you, everybody for coming. Keeping your prayers a piece to the far west of us certainly, they certainly struggle. Sometimes that'll help the people around you. But we appreciate everybody coming.
The first item we're going to address is actually the addition. So I had the opportunity to meet with the sheriff on Friday and we will be coming back with a more comprehensive recommendation for the opioid funds, but after looking at all that they have going, I'd like to recommend approval of the purchase of the three vehicles. That'll be approximately ninety-nine thousand dollars from the opioid funds. And this money will be sent to the sheriff and they will purchase the vehicles, not us purchasing the vehicles.
Chairman, I move the approval.
Motion in a second. We would prove.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the employee of the month for January twenty twenty-five. Sarah Sun's going to come forward and present this item. Ms. Judy Austin, I will just take a moment to say this was her last meeting with us. She is retiring this week. And so as we transition to Sarah Sun as the human resource director, she's going to present the employee of the month.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It is my pleasure to announce Ms. Julia Godwin-Williams as the employee of the month for January twenty twenty-five. That is time I invite Julia to come up with me. Whereas Jackson County has established an employee of the month program to recognize one employee to represent the various departments. And whereas Julia Godwin-Williams began her employment with the county on July fifth, two thousand twenty-three, she currently serves as administrative assistant for the administration office in the maintenance department and has been selected as employee of the month for January twenty twenty-five for the standards that she has displayed in the performance of her job duties. And whereas Julia demonstrates professionalism in every task she faces and her loyalty to Jackson County is recognized by her coworkers. Julia shows a poise and professionalism that is beyond her years. She exhibits a work ethic that is unparalleled, working a part-time job and completing online studies, all while performing her duties as the administrative assistant for the administration office and the maintenance department. She takes pride in completing her task with precision and always strives for perfection in everything that she does. Whereas Julia is consistently complimented on her kind of demeanor from coworkers and citizens alike. She often goes out of her way to do more than is asked and required of her. She always accepts challenges with a can-do spirit and a smile. Her commitment to her excellence and ability to be for citizens and employees of Jackson County make her an inspiration to her coworkers. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Jackson County, Florida commands and congratulates Julia Godwin-Williams on her selection as employee of the month for January twenty twenty-five.
I'd like to bring from the board. Thank you. Chairman, I'll offer a motion to approve Ms. Godwin-Williams as the employee of the month in Jackson County for January twenty twenty-five. Authorize the check in the amount of two hundred dollars and adopt the proclamation and authorize you as the chairman to sign.
A second.
Yeah, and if I could add that, we'll also authorize a day off of work.
One of us.
And she, Julia, is truly a bright light in the county, specifically at admin. I had to tell a white lie to get her in here this morning, but anyway, congratulations, Julia.
All right, move along.
All right, the next is the board recognition of employees for years of service. We're gonna start with Jennifer Hamm, who was unable to be here last month. So Judy Austin is going to present this.
Come on up, Jennifer. So I just want to recognize Jennifer Hamm. She's been here for five years. Jennifer has been a huge asset to me as an individual and we've become something more than just coworkers. So anyway, Jennifer Hamm, her anniversary date was in November, but she was unable to be here. Jennifer, her name is a modern version of the name Winifere, the king, the queen to the King Arthur in British legends. Jennifer means fair lady. Jennifer is married to TM Ham, who works at probation and parole office. She has a daughter Audrey and a son Riley. She also has a granddaughter Ansley, who has basically stolen her heart. Jennifer always puts her family first above anything else. She is a dedicated wife, mother, and grandmother, or Gigi, as Ansley calls her. Jennifer came to work in human resources in November two thousand nineteen. This was about the same time that the COVID mandates were put in place. That also became at the same time, basically. She was instrumental in ensuring compliance and helping employees understand and navigate the process. She has been instrumental in streamlining and onboarding, the onboarding processes for new hires and increase overall efficiency within the department. The quality that I chose for her actually was, there were two qualities I chose for Jennifer. It was responsibility and loyalty. That means knowing and doing what is expected of her and using difficult times to demonstrate her commitment to those she serves. Jennifer has a heightened sense of responsibility. She is always on task and completes all assignments timely and accurately. She is committed to the employees and makes herself available to meet their needs, sometimes just to listen when they have struggles. Jennifer's sense of responsibility is not only evident at work, but also in the interactions with her family. She has supported her family through many hardships and is a shining example of what it means to be loyal and sacrifice self for those we love. Jennifer is the first point of contact for new hires and then gravitate to her for any issues during the first few months of employment for information and assistance. And I just want to thank you personally, Jennifer, for making my job easier.
Okay, if everyone will just stand to the side till the end, we'll get a photo with the chairman. But next we need Derek Coleman. So Jeffrey here to.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have Mr. Derek Coleman here from Roden Bridge. He started at Roden Bridge back in December of twenty fourteen. He's been here ten years. Derek is a father of six and a grandfather of three. In his spare time, he enjoys playing basketball. His name is of German descent, meaning ruler of the people. Derek was originally hired as an equipment operator one, assigned to a brush cutter. He was permanently assigned to the position of equipment operator two in April of two thousand nineteen. And he is currently assigned to a dump truck. During his time at Roden Bridge, he has also worked on a pass truck as well as a grapple truck. His character trait that we chose was flexibility versus resistance, meaning not becoming attached to ideas or plans which could be changed by my authorities. Our organization has undergone many changes over the years. Sometimes these changes affect us operationally. Derek has adapted to these changes very well without resistance. Having employees like Mr. Coleman who adapt to these changes with ease and flexibility helps keep day-to-day operations running smoothly. Thank you for your service.
And next we have Pam Dixon.
Hello, Pam. Next we have Ms. Pam Dixon. She started here in January two thousand nineteen. She's been here with us five years. Pam is a mother of three and a grandmother of three. Most of her free time is spent with her family. Pamela is derived from the Greek meaning honey, or all sweetness. I know about that. Pam was a welcome addition after being shorthanded for so long after Hurricane Michael. She started in Roden Bridge, made offices and administrative assistant, answering phones and doing data entry. Several months ago, she moved over to our fleet maintenance office. There she opens and enters work orders, pours needed items for the mechanics, checks out supplies, handles the related billing and works with any fuel master system. The words that we chose of Pam was endurance versus giving up. The inward strength to restrain stress and do my best. Pam has spent most of her time at Roden Bridge answering phone calls from the public. Those calls are very rarely to say thank you, while some issues are reported in respectful manner, while many others lean towards angry complaints and sometimes includes various threats. It takes a special person to not take this negativity personal. Pam could have walked away, but she chose endurance and in our department, she is better for it. Even though she no longer serves in that particular role, she chose to stay with Roden Bridge, keeping her knowledge and experience within the organization. Thank you, Pam, for your years with us.
Next we have Howard Payne.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. We'll go ahead and do harm.
Now we have Mr. Harmon Watts, probably a very familiar face to y'all. Mr. Harmon started at Roden Bridge in December of two thousand nineteen. He's been with us five years. Harmon and Shirley have been married for seventeen years. Together they have five children, fourteen grandchildren and two great-grandchildren. When he isn't spending time with his family, he's cutting grass on the side, hunting and tended to their chicken, goats and rabbits. Harmon is a morning and originally meaning soldier. Harmon originally began with Roden Bridge in two thousand seventeen, then returned in two thousand nineteen. During his time with us, he has been an equipment operator one and three, sign maintenance and is currently a program supervisor. He's been on a dump truck, bucket truck, loader, excavator, tractor, bush hog, as well as boots on the ground, grabbing shovel, rakes, anything else we need him to do. The quality trait that we chose of Mr. Watts is thriftiness versus extravagance, not letting myself or others spend that which is not necessary. We have several examples how Mr. Harmon, regardless of his role, will repair, reuse or repurpose anything he can to get the job done while saving the county money. However, our favor is when Harmon was handling our sign maintenance, he was tasked with getting our traffic condition ready for a project. He discovered four batteries were needed and was told to get them. So proceeded to call around for prices. Later, Mr. Watts has reported to Jeffrey that he didn't get the batteries because of, they had gotten so expensive. Y'all laughing, I must already know where this is going. So Jeffrey asked Harmon, how much were they? And then he responded fifty-two dollars. And Jeffrey says, Harmon, get the batteries. If Harmon asks for a new item or two, we never have to question the legitimacy of that request because we know he's exhausted all other options. Thank you for your five years, Harmon.
Take care of the pennies, the dollars, take care of the plan.
All right, next we have Howard Payne.
One.
One.
I have Mr. Howard. Howard Payne. Howard started with us on December the eleventh, two thousand nine, five years of service. The name Howard is of English origin and it means heartbreak or high guarding. Howard is a family-oriented individual and enjoys grilling for his mom on Sundays. Howard always has a great story to tell about hunting adventures and building his house. Howard came to the county of the extensive career in hardware sales at Tatum's Hardware Supply, as well as the construction industry. He is employed at the maintenance technician where he takes on responsibility for a wide variety of tasks and projects. However, his expertise is in carpentry. The character qualities for Howard is visionary and creativity. Definition is approaching a need, task or idea from a new perspective. Howard constantly amazed me when working on project. Most recently, we constructed a float for the Christmas parade. All it took was for me to show Howard a picture of what I was looking for and he took it by the horns. At the time, I was thinking to myself, like, how is he gonna do this? But nevertheless, the trust of the process and he provided exactly what I envisioned, if not more. I received many compliments by several, by several people that saying that we had the best floating rate. Um, see, the benefit of Howard's visionary thinking can help communicate to other departments the values. He finds creative solutions day-to-day challenging, by challenging, repurposing materials and repairing equipment in unconventional ways, which saves us time and money. Thank you, Howard.
Okay, if the chairman would like to come down, we'll get a photo. Thanks.
By half of the board, we appreciate every employee we have, whether it's one that got the five-year pin. Thank you.
Thanks. The next item is to board adoption of resolution naming Circuit courtroom in honor of honorable Judge Robert L. McCrery Jr. There is a resolution attached in your packets and I know that we have both judges here. If you have any questions, we don't typically read a whole resolution, but I'm happy to do so if you want me to.
Madam Judge, you have something you'd like to say?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Your honor, judge, you have something you'd like to say?
Great. Well done. Daniels helped us in resolution approved by Judge Hatcher as far as accuracy, as well as Miss Baggett's court administration for acting on Judge McCrery's resolution. So we appreciate your consideration of the request.
Well, I will say this, that I had the opportunity to know both Judge McCrery and certainly still know Judge Hatcher. Both of those individuals have done a lot of good work in our community, in our county. And I think it's a wonderful, a wonderful thing that we're doing this in honor of both of those individuals because again, both of them have done so much for this county and I think it's a very, a very good thing to be doing for both of them and naming the, both of the courtrooms after, naming the courtrooms after each one of those individuals, I think is very, a very appropriate honor.
And I know it will take a minute, but I actually think we should read the resolutions just for everyone to hear.
What was wonderful about it to me, and I appreciate y'all, most of the time when somebody gets out of sight, it's all over. So we gotta do all the, all the hollering and cheering while they're there. And this is after someone's gone. And that's wonderful, y'all, think to do that. I admire that. Not sure if anybody else.
I'll have to move to adopt the resolution, authorize the chairperson to sign.
Thank you.
Got a motion and second for the resolution. You now must continue. Thank you.
All right, the next item is the resolution dedicating the Jackson County courtroom as the Judge Woodrow W. Hatcher courtroom.
I'll move to adopt the resolution and authorize the chairman to sign. Second.
Motion in a second. Clear to you, Mr. Pratt. Be fine. All in favor?
Just thank you to Judge Mercer for bringing this to our attention and of course Judge Garcia's support. And then for Amber, thank you for getting all the information gathered up and helping us put it together.
As far as the courtrooms go, Judge Mercer or Judge Garcia, will there be some type of plaque or some type of name applied to either one of the courtrooms in recognition of his honor?
I think the plan is, we've talked with Miss Baggett with court administration, the plan is to get identical plaques for each courtroom that include a little bit of biographical information. And at some point in the near future, we'll schedule a reception for Judge Hatcher for the county courtroom and a separate reception for Judge McCrery's family, friends and associates for the circuit courtroom. And I anticipate that happening in the next thirty to forty-five days.
And we'd love for you guys to be a part of it.
We'd love to. I'll say if you would notify. We will coordinate with Ms. Daniels. As my granddaddy would say, thank you, Mr. Gentleman.
We thank y'all. We appreciate you coming. We appreciate having both of you so far.
The next item is, this is a request for board adoption of a resolution supporting USBR ninety realignment. This is a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Jackson County, Florida, in support of the realignment of United States Bicycle Route ninety to Jackson County to promote bicycle tourism, authorizing the board chairman to take any action necessary to carry out the purposes of this resolution and providing for an effective date. This is nothing the board is doing. This is just supporting the efforts of some interested parties pursuing funding for this.
Just a quick question. This is basically assigning that route to the Blue Springs Highway?
Yes, sir.
Does it, does it, of course, Blue Springs Highway doesn't traverse all the way through the county. How does that work? Is it just?
So it's a kind of a detour route for Blue Springs. So trying to initiate a little bit more traffic out there with the campground development, adding park amenities and extended seasons. We've actually, prior to this request coming in late last year, we'd already made plans on some of the road improvements that are going on out there. Adding shoulders as part of the DOT grant projects, as well as the sewer grant projects to accommodate for the pedestrian and/or bicycle traffic.
That was gonna be my question. If we were gonna name this as an alternate route or as a, for the bicycle, you know, does it accommodate that type of traffic? And I know that the first, the phase that they're doing now will have widened shoulders to accommodate that. And I guess as we move forward, that'll be the case the entire way.
Yes, sir. So the long-term plan trail-wise that we're working on is coming from either Highway ninety or seventy-one, going all the way down Blue Springs Road, having Blue Springs as a feature stop, and then running all the way down towards River Road, catching some of the Lake Seminole properties and developing some of those as trail sites as well.
And you do understand that road used to come through that way back to the north of where it is now. And it went across the Blue Springs. Any other question?
I'll move to adopt the resolution, USBR ninety, which is the realignment and authorize the chairman to sign.
I heard the recommendation and the motion. You have a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. You now must.
Okay, next is request for adoption of FDOT Scott Resolution and Approval of the Supplemental Agreement. This is for Council Highway and this is specifically for the design work.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve.
Mr. Pratt, you don't make the motion.
Second.
Second.
I have a question. Who, how, how long was that project?
The design, how long did it have to design it or for the?
How, how much of the road is, is going to be?
Okay, so.
What my question.
This design expansion will design the entire road, then we'll come back and apply for construction in different phases. So the first one was from, let me find it here, from Topaz back to Fairview. And then the next construction phase will move towards two thirty-one.
That's not gonna be the one lane thing that they did out there now, right?
It's, no, it's full, full with.
Full road.
Yes, sir.
Right, the lower. And this will put us in a better position to receive those construction funds.
Yes, sir.
At some point in the future.
This was at the recommendation of DOT, once they, we put in this year's application and they kind of picked up the pattern of how we're going after the same projects or expanded projects year after year. So they wanted to go ahead and get the entire design. That way we have a little better understanding of what the construction funding would be, so we could have a more accurate application year after year.
Any other discussion, any other question? All right, you heard it. Administrator recommended.
I made a motion and a second.
It ought to have been a second and a motion. So I guess all in favor, but raise your right hand. You now must.
Okay, the next item is a public hearing. It goes into our public hearing section. So the first item is request for approval of a modification to Love's RV stop. A request to review and approve a modification to a previously approved general development order for Love's RV stop. The request is to add fourteen additional RV spaces and modify proposed amenities and improvements. The thirty-five-point-five acre parcel is located on the north side of Dillmore Road, approximately eight hundred and seventy-five feet east of the intersection of Highway two thirty-one and Dillmore Road. And we do recommend approving, but you'll want to close out and go into public hearing and let the public speak. So if anyone is for or against this, this would be the time to do that.
I have a motion, my motion.
Okay, so if anyone's here to speak for or against this item, now's the time to do that. And Fred, please let us know if anyone's online.
You know, online would like to speak for or against this item. They may use the raise hand feature on Zoom or star nine via telephone. I have no online hands.
Okay, I think y'all can close it out and take a vote.
Great recommendation. Once the board's led.
Offer a motion to approve the modification to the Love's RV Stop Development Agreement and authorize you to sign.
Thank you.
Motion in a second. All approved. Moving on.
The next item is board approval of Twin Ponds Road Mini Farm Subdivision. This is a request for a nine-lot minor residential subdivision with lots ranging from two-point-two-zero acres to five acres. The proposed subdivision will be situated on the corner of Twin Ponds Road and Fairview Road in unincorporated Jackson County. The planning commission recommended approval of the plat for the VOCC. At this time, the board will close out its regular meeting, open a public hearing. So if anyone is here for or against the item, this is the time to do that.
My question is, where's Twin Pond Road?
From Fairview, going towards.
The last road on the left in Jackson County.
Okay, that, Peacock, Peacock Bay, about long enough?
No. Actually past Silver Lake, past Silver Lake.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, seeing no one for or against this item, I think y'all can take a vote.
Offer a motion to approve the Twin Pond Road Mini Farm Subdivision and authorize Mr. Westbrook as the chairman to sign.
A second.
Got a motion in a second to approve. All in favor, raise your hand. Got a motion and a second to approve. All in favor, raise your hand.
Okay. Uh, the next item is request board approval of an extension to a development agreement for Peacock Bridge Store. A request for a twelve month extension for an existing development agreement for Peacock Bridge Store. On March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, the Board of County Commissioners approved a development agreement for a thirty-two hundred square foot of impervious to include a convenience and liquor store, vehicular use area and sidewalks. This project is to be located on the west side of Highway Seventy-One South, approximately four hundred and seventy feet north of the intersection of Highway Seventy-One South and Peacock Bridge Road. On March sixth, twenty twenty-three, the planning commission recommended approval. And on March twenty-eighth, the Board of County Commissioners rec, uh, approved the DA. Um, the recommendation is to approve the twelve month extension for the development agreement. Uh, so at this time, if the public is either for or against this item, this is the time to speak to it. Seeing no one, I think you all can take a vote.
All right. You heard the recommendation by the administrators.
Much a bold choice. I got a question real quick. Uh, is there a reason for the request?
The stated reason is, uh, inability to find a contractor to build the facility.
That was my question. Well, I'll offer a motion to approve the twelve month extension for the development agreement for the Peacock Ridge Store and authorize, uh, Mr. Westbrook to sign as chairman.
Yes, sir. I have a long time to sign.
My second.
Have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor, right hand.
Next is, uh, request board approval of Phase One Dryden Properties and Development, Development General and Development, General Development Order. A request to construct Phase One totaling twenty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine square feet of impervious surface area consisting of an office, retail and warehouse space with sidewalks and vehicular use area. The property is located approximately one thousand two hundred and fifty feet west of the intersection of Highway Seventy-One and Commercial Park Drive on the south side of Commercial Park Drive in unincorporated Jackson County. On December tenth, twenty twenty-four, the board approved the public, to set public hearing. And on December second, the planning commission recommended approval. At this time, if anyone is for or against this item, this is the time to share your feelings.
What type of development is this?
Um, this is gonna be office, retail and warehouse space.
You have the floor.
Good morning.
Good morning. You have the floor.
I have the floor. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I'm Mary Margaret with Melvin Engineering, and I'm representing the client if I have any questions.
Any questions on the board?
And so this is, uh, for a potential office space and warehouse?
Yes.
Is the intended use used? And this is right immediately adjacent to fire rescue?
It's a lot over, but yes.
A lot over, if you decide a fire rescue.
Yes. Between Centos and the fire rescue.
Did I read somewhere it's gonna be cabinet? Something had to do with cabinets?
Could be.
Charlie, any? Chief Runner, any to worry about, uh, the intended use on fire rescue?
Okay.
Reckon we might get a little fuller commitment for that.
Same.
Ma'am.
Same.
Thank you. That's okay. That was a joke more than. Lord's pleasure.
Make a motion to approve it.
Motion, second. I second that. On my north side or my immediate right? Motion and a second. Everybody, all right. We could have just taken them all at one time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, next on the agenda is the consent. This is the consent agenda item. Uh, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
I do have one question, item D, under the consent agenda. This is the approval. I, I guess there will, can you tell me who, who that was? Was that a commercial account or?
It was the, uh, Wendy's out by the interstate.
And so they, they put in the wrong meter or a meter that didn't read comparable to?
It was a, it was an issue on our side when we started reading. So it was a contractor supplied me, not one. We have some others in the system, but whenever it was set up in the billing system, um, we missed a digit on the meter. So it's a compound meter. So there's two registers to get one final read. And we missed the tenths digit. So it was reading in whole gallons versus tenths. So it was over billing monthly, uh, for a period of time.
So pretty much the entire time they've been open?
Yes, sir. I don't remember exactly when it started, but it's been well over a year.
And those dollars that come out of the utility?
Yes, sir.
Where does, uh, excuse me, where is the permit for Florida Power and Light? Where is that located? What area? This, what's the fiscal? They have that.
Hold on one second. We'll flip to that.
This will be, uh, uh, this will be for a landscaping project in one of their solar sites on Delwood Cypress Road.
Where is, where is the site?
It'll be the, is it American? It's American.
It's a red, it's Reddick and Delwood Cypress Road. It's right, if you turn off of Reddick, um, it looks like it's down on the east side of Delwood Cypress Road, if, if I'm looking at this correctly.
It's right there between Hollister and Delwood.
I got. They had, they waited a long time to do something with it. I was looking for, I might think it was a minute.
Hey, commissioners, um, so what, what they're doing is, um, Blue Sky is actually the contractor who's gonna be installing a drain line on the west side of the road. Their property is holding water, so they're gonna pump it to the east side. They still have that triangular shaped, uh, piece of the parcel on the east side of the road. So what they're wanting to do is bury that, that drain line under the road for just a temporary timeframe. Um, my understanding is roughly two weeks, less than a month. It's as quickly as possible. They want to get that water drained off the property and then they'll be removing it. So this is not actually something they intend to leave.
Well, I mean, is this gonna be an ongoing situation?
That's what I asked. I asked, it, to me, it's, doesn't make any sense to pull it up. If you're gonna end up with the same issue. Um, I did not get the impression that this was gonna be a recurring problem, so I don't know if that they're gonna go ahead and get that water drained off so they can make improvements to prevent this from happening in the future. But I did offer them the opportunity because they're, with a permit like this, there's a hundred dollar permitting fee. The permit is good for twenty years, but, um, they were fairly insistent that, um, I actually spoke with a Black and Beach rep and also with Blue Sky and both, both indicated that it's just a very temporary kind of a one-time deal.
It sounds like to me what you've, uh, kind of, uh, are surmising is that they're gonna pump this water off so they can make some type of drainage improvement or some type of filling in, uh, to mitigate the problem. So it won't happen again.
Correct. That, that's my understanding.
Is the water gonna stay on that triangular part or?
I'm not, I'm not sure.
I wonder if it's gonna encroach on somebody else's property.
Should we wait and approve this? Do we become sure?
I mean, there's some question, uh, yeah, I guess my question is kind of what, what Commissioner Bunchfield asked. If they're gonna be taking the water, problematic water, putting it on the other side of the road. Are we sure that there's not gonna be problems with that? I mean, it's.
If you look at the drawing, I think there's enough land remaining in that parcel on the east side of the road that it shouldn't affect anybody else. And again, this isn't like a permanent drain where it's gonna continuously put water off.
Far down the Reddick Road, where'd it go? Would it start at the Reddick Road? Not where it start?
No, it's, it's just north of Reddick. I don't remember if I put the distance. I think I put the distance in the background.
Yeah, it looks like where there, there's a, if you look at the contours, it looks like there's a low area with a contour of about a hundred and twenty that this water, once they pump it there, is actually gonna go to that little area kind of on the, I'm not, I'll see the north there on this, but it looks like, uh, that water will maybe, uh, primarily coalesce in that, that low area on that side of the pond. Then once they fix the drainage issue, it should not be a problem.
That's my understanding.
Your contact person is Black and Beach?
Yes.
I would, I'd love to know where, where that water's going to. I need to put it on somebody else.
I know, that, that's what I give. That's, I don't know, probably I have. Yeah, don't go on somebody else's property and they don't own it. I don't know how much water you're talking about.
I'm not sure.
And how far down the, down the road, down payment is it?
They, I didn't, I didn't check the, the area that that water is going to. Um.
Yeah, I think I'd prefer, why don't, why don't we pull this from the consent agenda and maybe ask them to come, somebody to come in? Because it, the contour, the topographic map doesn't extend far enough to see, to make sure that this is not gonna be problematic to the area to the right. Um, it, it's just hard to tell. And, uh, I think before we create another problem that we're gonna be dealing with, I, I'd sooner have some answers to the questions that we got.
If you'd like, I can try to get them on the phone and so they can speak on this a little bit later.
They won't, they won't call on the phone here, it can be the Nigeria, but at the same time, ask them to send us something much more specific if you don't mind.
Okay.
We're not trying to chastise you or hard time you. All we wanna do is, don't start something one place and wind up with something another.
I'm, I'm making a motion that we table this particular item on agenda, then we can approve the rest of the agenda.
All right, I'll get in touch with them.
Yeah, motion, do I have a second?
I do, I say.
Okay, got two and three seconds. Anyway, all in favor, table, right hand, all opposed, same time.
And with that, I'll offer a motion to approve the consent agenda minus that one item.
Second.
Okay, have a motion, send a, a motion and a second on the consent agendas. Any question? All in favor, right hand. Yeah.
The next item is number two, under this section, which is request board approval of grant match for Grand Ridge Volunteer Fire Department. The Grand Ridge Volunteer Fire Department has been awarded a grant by the Forest, Florida Forest Service to purchase turnout gear. They're requesting seven thousand five hundred dollars in match funding to assist in this purchase, and this is a budgeted item.
Make a motion to approve the grant match.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Grant match. Mr. Clark, everybody, but right hand, move along.
Next is request board approval to apply for a Florida Department of Health EMS matching grant for pediatric equipment. Uh, so the grant that we match would be zero to twenty-five percent depending on scoring. If funded, the match would not exceed twenty-six thousand dollars, which, uh, would come from our grant match funds. Uh, but the board has to approve this application for the chairman to sign.
So, Jim.
Motion by Dr. Spire. Got a second by Mr. Crutchfield. Any question? All in favor, right?
Okay.
Now, Mr. Clark.
Next is request board approval to apply for the Florida Department of Health EMS matching grant for one ambulance. Uh, this also would be a zero to twenty-five percent match depending on scoring. If funded, the match would not exceed one hundred thousand fifty dollars. Uh, and this would actually, if awarded and there was a match required, would be addressed during your next budget cycle.
If, if we are all awarded this, um, would there be additional dollars, Chief Runner, to outfit the ambulance? Or does it pretty much come ready to use?
Yeah, I'll offer a motion to approve and apply for the Florida Department of Health EMS matching grant and authorize chairman to sign.
I have a motion. Second, Mr. Crutchfield. All in favor, right hand. You now must consent. Maybe the next time when we apply for one, it's the, uh, some of the utility companies may bring us an ambulance. Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Uh, request board approval to purchase fire gear for municipal equipment company off of contract pricing. Uh, this is, we're, uh, proposing to use the Lake County contract in the amount of seventy-three thousand five hundred and sixty-seven dollars and twenty cents. And this is a budgeted item in Fire Rescue Capital Outlay.
Who approves this here?
Motion by Dr. Spire.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Crutchfield. Any question? All approved, raise your right hand. You now must consent, move along.
Okay, next we have Mr. Darwin Gilmore here to give an update to the board on economic development.
I got a question.
Thank you. Thank you for having me today. Gentlemen, good to see you. Pardon?
You got the floor.
Thank you. Good to see you all. This is the first time I've been in front of, uh, sides you three gentlemen, the new commissioners. So welcome, uh, Dr. Spires and Mr. Westbrook.
Go ahead and approve now if you will.
We, uh, at J C E D C, we've been very active and, uh, very busy. I was sharing with my executive board. Uh, we have a new board in place, uh, as of this year, that, uh, more traveling than I've probably done since my early days at Unimac. And, uh, it's invigorating. It's a little bit tiring, but, uh, you know, it's invigorating to be engaged in our local, regional and state level, uh, relationships where we keep gaining contacts, we keep building our network, we keep getting our name out there to interested design build firms. Um, share a little bit more about that, but we feel good that there's some momentum. Actually, uh, I shared with you some of the economic development, uh, metrics that were provided by Ben Lee in a, in a recent full board meeting for us, uh, from Hancock Whitney. Jackson County shows pretty well in our numbers. Um, maybe better than some people think in terms of jobs and net income migration and these kind of things, GDP. So, uh, but I, I wanted to bring to your attention one, uh, topic, TPA group, uh, is, is an option agreement that we have in hand and we're, uh, reviewing it, both the county and the city. And I would just encourage you, urge you, if you will, to hopefully prioritize that agreement. That's with, uh, a group that's gonna help market some of our area and the distribution and construction park. And hopefully help us bring in manufacturing, distribution, that kind of, that kind of, uh, uh, company. Um, if you'll take a look at that, and, and we're participating in what's called Leadership Northwest Florida. It's been active, uh, will be active through May. Uh, that is learning more and more about the panhandle. That is staying in contact with all these leads. Like I say, with, if you're not in the relationships with these area, uh, folks, then you may not get the lead, uh, where the contacts can come from that could be a business, uh, interested in our area. So, uh, I'm, I'm happy to report on a couple of little successes. One is being part of that, uh, group, uh, we met with Hung Tomsky. Hung is the area leader for Florida Blue. Uh, Florida Blue is the number one payer for all healthcare services in our state, you may know. And they're actively involved in, uh, growing their impact on economic development. So we hosted, uh, herself and some colleagues and a few area CEOs, uh, in healthcare and began to rainstorm about some opportunities. We're trying to participate in all sectors. We talked about education before, but now we're participating in the healthcare section, trying to bring it, uh, you know, along to where we can benefit them. Uh, we've taken a look at the hospital facility, uh, over in the Graceville area. Talked about opportunities there which might be, uh, development opportunities, um, to add jobs, to build our economy. So we're seeing some important, uh, activity there. Uh, one of the big wins that is coming about is our RIF grant we applied for through the city of Marianna and were approved, a one point six plus million dollar, uh, rural infrastructure grant fund. And that, that rural infrastructure grant is gonna help modify the former Unimac building and is going to accommodate a new company. I'm gonna out their name today. Uh, they've been in the area, but they're trying to grow and they're about to be pushing for, uh, a hundred jobs in the next few years. And that's Pulse Industries. uh, a hundred jobs in the next few years, and that's Pulse Industries. Uh, their leader is, um, Dr. Eric Burgett. Uh, this is a company that makes linear electronic accelerators. They're participating on the world stage. Actually, he leaves tomorrow going to Davos. Uh, in a group called Earthbow Five, if you want to look it up. But these people are trying to impact, uh, sanitation of water, sanitation of wastewater, sanitation of medical related, uh, products, devices. And for us, they're, they're engaged in sanitation of fruits and vegetables whereby, when you take a, a radiation beam and zap that, if you will, uh, these fruits or vegetables, not only does it clean out all the impurities, but it extends the market life by thirty to forty-five days, which has a huge economic impact. So, these are people who are landing in our area, in our building, and going to be a, a hundred jobs or more in the next couple of years. Uh, also, we have another company, um, our, our project Bristol is moving forward. It's actually gonna be moving forward in a, a way of landing in a new building. Uh, we're working on some things in writing there to try to get that locked down. Um, it's, it's exciting. That'll be another, uh, hundred jobs or so in the, in the next, uh, couple of years. So, that's more of a food and beverage related. So, between complex manufacturing and food and beverage process jobs. These are high wage jobs, high skilled jobs that are going to be in our two largest, uh, facilities in our community. So, we're excited about that. Uh, again, I've been, I've been, uh, getting some training. Have a lot to learn about more and more economic development trends that are happening. Uh, but I'm very excited about upcoming meetings, how we've been retain, retaining local companies that could have been gone, would have been off the radar, just gone. But, uh, thankfully, you won't be hearing about that. Seems like they're going to be staying and be retained. So, uh, thank you for your support. You know, we're about two-thirds public funding and only one-third private funding. So, without you and without our contract, of course, we don't exist. So, um, I appreciate your support, appreciate your, uh, competence. And look forward to seeing what we can do in, uh, in the next few months about, uh, some announcements.
What position do you say Ben, where you at with you?
Uh, Ben is actually on our board. Uh, he's on the JC EDC board, uh, right now from Hancock Whitney.
I know him very well.
Uh, he's been, he's been active and he may not be the same, uh, participant from now on. It might be someone else from Hancock Whitney. But right now, Ben is, is our board participant. Uh, so, again, we, we're, I'm proud, I'm proud to represent you all. I'm proud every time we go to these meetings to stand up for Jackson County and not tell them we're in business, we're ready for growth. And we have these certified sites and you'd be proud that we're, we're seeing a lot of uptick and, and some interest in calls and looking forward to more growth.
Mr. Mr. Gilmore, are you, the TPA group option agreement, uh, it's currently being looked at by both city and county attorneys?
Yes, sir.
Anything that we need to do to try to push that along? Is there, uh?
Uh, yeah, I think if you just encourage that and, and make sure we're looking at the details of that. I don't think we're going to get blindsided by anything, but, uh, it's incumbent upon us all to just encourage them to prioritize those, uh, uh, that agreement to be approved.
Waiting on that so that we can approve it.
Yes, yeah, as soon as that gets vetted, we're gonna bring it to a vote for approvals.
And I'll just add there that it's my understanding that Michelle offered her red lines on what she feels. Now, Mr. Long is here, he may have something to add. Um, I think that we're, we're waiting on, uh, the city attorney to review that. Unless something has happened I don't know about, so he, he may have an update that I don't know about.
Dr. Spire, you have a call.
Give him the skill more.
Yes, sir.
The Unimac building is currently being used for, for any purpose right now?
No, no, when Catalyst left, uh, they'd be ordered out. And when they left, uh, there's not been any, uh, new tenant yet. We have shown that building, uh, several times to other possible tenants. But, uh, this, this lease agreement is forthcoming with the, the new entity.
Okay, alright. And a couple of years ago, there was a couple of development sites that had been identified in case there was some industry that ended that was interested in those sites. Are they still available? I think one was off of Highway Two near Hamilton, another one over near, I think.
As far as the mega site, uh, there's still activity in those areas. I wouldn't say there's any real qualified leads in those areas.
Still available, is that right?
Yes, the, the option agreement is still intact for, uh, that is, uh, is owned by Woodlands Company. But yes, the option agreement is still intact for that mega site, which is twenty-two hundred and forty acres up around Hamilton. And we're actively engaging people about, uh, considering that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Uh, and, and we know that, uh, JC EDC is doing a lot, uh, of work. But sometimes I get questions, uh, by the public is, you know, what are we doing in economic development? Why aren't we more successful? Uh, I know, uh, again, all of us know that we're doing quite a bit of work. There's a lot of work that you're doing. There was a lot of work that was being done by Zach Prior through that and Tiffany in the chamber. We all know that there's a lot of, uh, work being gone, uh, being done towards economic development. How can we do a better job of getting that out to the public, uh, to, to just let them know that we're working, we're working hard? Uh, we're, we're doing everything that we can, uh, to, uh, spur economic development in Jackson County.
I'll try to see if I can do a better job of cooperating with the county and utilizing some of the existing resources and get it through those channels. Uh, maybe Ms. Smith, uh, and work together on something along those lines.
Cause again, I, I know that we're doing a lot of economic development work, the work that you're doing, uh, uh, the networking, the traveling, all of that will pay dividends. Uh, but, uh, you know, oftentimes there's, uh, uh, there's just a disconnect between the, the general public and what we know. And any, anything that we can do to, to help, uh, uh, make that connection, let, let the general public know that we're, you know, we're working on economic.
Sure, some of that's confidential, uh, but a lot of it, yes, we should be able to give general information about activity and, and we will.
And one additional question, the, uh, the RIF grant, uh, the one point six million dollars that you spoke about, is that primarily going to be electrical stuff that has to be done at the building or?
No, it includes beefing up a ramp, uh, a loading ramp coming in and out. They're actually gonna drive a truck in with a flatbed, flatbed to accommodate loading those very complex electrical components. And, uh, then they're gonna have some widening of some doors, they're gonna have some lifting of some utilities and removing, uh, some utilities, upgrading the HVAC, cause you have to have precision controlled, uh, temperature in rooms when you're cutting machining at, at very tight tolerance, uh, machine work. So, uh, it'll be a range of things, but, uh, not primary electrical, but including electrical.
Our workforce can handle that?
Yes, sir, I think we can. Um, you know, they're gonna be a cooperative player. They're gonna be engaged with the colleagues. They're gonna be engaged with the secondary schools, uh, helping build training programs, helping offer equipment, things of these nature. They want to be, uh, a good partner to our region.
Ingru.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir. While we're still on the economic thing, I, I was not aware of this, uh, probably should have been, but I was not. I got contacted this week about improvements and additions, uh, re, rebuilding Spanish Trail lumber in Cypress.
Yes, I saw that.
They've, they have went out and invested millions of dollars in that metal.
They've been here a long time.
They've been here since ninety-three, I believe.
They, they were actually here, oh, what, eighty? Seventy, eight, nine.
Under another name.
Uh, I worked for them.
I didn't realize how much money they have invested in that thing and how many more employees there. It's not complete yet. I, I just think, I, I, I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention.
And one of the reasons they got here was the former Chipotle man, we all are classmates. And he's did a lot of encouraging to get them to come to Cypress.
They're, they're, they employ about a hundred people out there now. I don't think they're going to employ much more than that when they get this project done.
And they got a nice wage for most of them, a very good wage.
I just want to bring that to everybody's attention.
While you mentioned that, I know like Red Lumber Company in Graceville, they did some kind of major job where they had two big crane. I mean, never seen a crane that big before. Through the Christmas holidays, been there about two or three weeks. Doing some kind of upgrading or something they've been doing there. So, you know, they, they are moving on, proceed.
Allo. Any other question? Doctor, you know that? Move along, now.
Okay, the next is a request for approval of a public works project for Wilmington Court. Um, in through conversation with Dr. Spires, uh, he's requested that Roden Bridge clean out the existing ditch on Wilmington Court pending the full execution of three temporary ditch easements. Uh, we estimate this project to be completed within one week.
I have a question on that. What, 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 what is the difference between other ditches we have in the county? I know in my district, and I'm sure you got in all districts that need to be cleaned out. And my, my understanding was that we always, uh, if it contained to the road, we could get an easement and do it. If it didn't have a problem to the road, it was up to the property owner to clean it out. So, I mean, that's what I've, I've had a lot of, since I've been back on here even before. That a lot of people want stuff done and like it and you can't get it done. And what, I just want to know what the difference is of this project.
So, in this particular one, excuse me, the, uh, county road Wilmington Court, the drainage impacts Wilmington Court, but it flows through private property. So, we have to get, um, ditch easements from private properties to alleviate the flow and let it come from our established ditch and right of way. It goes to a drainage basin off of county property.
Well, this is different, I mean, this is a totally different project. Maybe somebody got, where they's having a problem with drainage goes through our property, our road, whatever, that's the difference.
They're similar. So, in this case specifically, it's in a curve of the road. And once it gets to the curve, there's a cross drain, but the off, the downstream, the cross drain, water has nowhere to go. So, it backs up through our road and in our right of way, and this will let the water off. Um, in cases like you're talking about, you referring to, um, can you give me an example or maybe an area? I could refresh my memory.
Uh, uh, well, I've had people call me from the time I first got elected on and I can't get anything done. Far as that, and I know places like over in, uh, out from, uh, over two thirty-one, close to South Road. And if it comes to big rain, like you were talking about, that whole road's underwater. And, uh, I know they wanted to get that ditch to clean that water, water, water would flow. They had a place over near Graceville on Pe, Pe, Penny Road. And all that floods out, you know, uh, uh, when it comes to high rain. I mean, there's nothing really we can do, you know, it backs up behind people houses and all. And, uh, you know, it ain't affecting other than water on the road that goes down. I don't know how you would alleviate that, you know, uh, I know like, I rode and looked at this spot here. And they, they have some pretty deep ditches and pipes and all on the highway. It's on the highway where it built up. And I know it's no different than backing up on, say, a dirt road. And, and at least on that, it's not in the road, it just back up in the ditch and then running to run off.
Sure.
And so, if I, I brought it up, it's always saying it's not on county property, it's on public property, it's up to them to take care of. You know, if it becomes a problem on the county road, then we'll get even to do something about it.
Right.
So, by that, so you said, I just have a problem, you know, uh, and no, no, uh, anything against Mr. Spire. But I think when everybody needs to be treated equally, you know, you do one for one, but you can't do one for another one. I don't think that's fair. I, I, I couldn't support it.
Well, I think what, what needs to happen is, and Brett, you be sure to, to weigh in here. But you know how this came about is Dr. Spire reached out, I think to the supervisor, and which led to this channel of the board needs to vote through an easement process if we're gonna access private property. That's the main thing. We just don't want staff. They can't go out and access private property, you know, but maybe we do need a mechanism for, because we do want every district to be treated the same as much as we are aware of and as possible. Um, so I don't know if you have any thoughts, Brett, on what Mr. Crutchfield's speaking to on a process?
Yeah, we'll do the same thing. So, um, once we review, uh, I'll go, I'll get with you after and get a full list of the concerned areas. We'll review, contact property owners, and if there's an impact to the county road, that's where we intervene. And if we got to go through private property, we work directly with the property owners to sign off. Um, and then if they allow, then we'll continue with the work.
We ever have a time when we never fixed all these roads, it's bad, eminent domain is gonna take over something.
I always tell.
Place in town, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, I, I always, I tell the people, if they call me now, I go out and look at it, even I talk to my supervisor, look at it. And, and I knew there ain't nothing we can do if it ain't causing a problem to the road. If it backs up in the ditch, it not causing a problem to the road. And I always tell them, there's nothing we can do, you know, if it's become a problem to the road, then we had to get an easement, we clean out that ditch.
Yes, sir.
You know, to help, help the road. But, uh, other than that, I mean, never got that, never got to this far to, you know, to even, I mean, you know, it just never got out the gate.
Okay.
And so, that's where I'm at, and I don't have a problem with that. Tell, telling people, I just feel like it needs to be free to fair. You know, uh, cause there's a lot of ditches gotta be cleaned, need to be cleaned out. It'd be the same situation as this. It may back up in a ditch. But on this particular part, I don't think water ever got on the road.
Okay, we'll, we'll treat each one identically.
Sure. Yeah, and this, this is longstanding. It was, it was dug out last, I think about ten years ago. And it was, had been, uh, maintained by the county prior to my first entry on the board. And that's twenty-eight years, thirty years ago, yeah. And occasionally it fills back up and we get permission to go in and clean it out.
Yeah.
Right, so.
Well, I, I understand, I understand that. Well, then, I, I know, I, I'm sure the other, other, uh, districts have got the same problem and, and you couldn't never, you couldn't never get them all cleaned out. I mean, I had a person ask me one, uh, over this, over on the west side of seventy-seven, and they reckon it was ditches that were dug back when they call Hoover ditches. And they were dug years and years ago. It all growed up and trees, you can see where they dug the dirt out filed it on the side. I walked down it and trees big enough you couldn't even reach around it. It grew right up on the bank. And, and, uh, you know, I said, you know, you can't, this is private property, you know. I said, they dug them back in them day. But if you took an excavator and put on particular ditches I'm talking about over there, it'd probably take, take an excavator and a man a year to clean all them out. And I know that the county can't afford that. You know, I, I sort of, and it's left up to the homeowner how to do it. And actually, that problem was put in. They thought the county supposed to maintain, you know, when it called it was dug by government money.
True.
But really, that's not true, cause they go out and build terraces and all by government money. But then it's up to the people to maintain them, you know, cause the county can't afford to do that. Can't, we take, buy a brand new excavator, put over it with a man for a year in that particular spot. And that don't even touch, no, nothing on the, on the east side. And that's where I'm at, you know. I, I can understand where, you know, you have to kind of be a limitation.
Sure.
But I do know, you know, the county, I think, it more or less has to maintain the roads and right of ways on the road. You know, and it comes with eight or ten inch rain, it's gonna back up everywhere, everywhere.
So, just so I understand, um, what you're saying to Mr. Crutchfield is historically the threshold for, uh, getting the county involved in cleaning out a ditch would be for, it'd be causing problems with the roadway, with county roadway.
If it's causing a problem with the road, you know, some reason, another blocking out the water or making back up on the road or washing the road into stuff like it, then I, I know you can get an easement to get in there and clean that out.
This particular, this particular ditch is not causing problems to the roadway.
No, I mean, it may have did a year ago when it was dirt road, but I know when that road was built, it built up. And I, I don't think water ever been on the road, would you say it, Mr. Spire? I know you want it done, but, but I mean, has the water been on the highway?
Well, if, if it's not cleaning out, it will eventually. It also causes flooding with the residents as well. And as I said, this ditch was originally dug before my presence on the board.
Yeah.
So, and it's not the kind of thing that requires maintenance every year.
I've been out to people's houses where it come eight or ten inch rain, and they got water. I've been out to people's houses where it come eight or ten inch rain, and they got water behind their house, it did get in it. Behind their house, they want it gone, but in a day or two it runs down. And it's running across the road, running across the dirt road, but can't do nothing about it. You know, is what I've been told. And so to me, I don't see no difference there than, than this. I don't. You know, I, I feel like that I try to treat people equally.
Sure. You have about three or four days to measure. Uh, if they're allowed to, we're allowed to, we'll say about fifty. Now, now, I'm not advocating it's, it's every small ditch that needs to be attended to by the county, and by saying that, this is. This probably expands, before you say, um, Tim, you have an idea about how long this ditch is? But I know, it's been approved by previous boards, so.
Mr. Commissioners.
Pardon?
The attorneys speak kind of speed.
Good morning, uh, Mr. Commissioners, I'm sorry, I couldn't be there with you, um, in person this morning, I'm pretty under the weather. I did just wanna kind of hop in and, um. Add some legal, uh, discourse to the conversation, so. What we've learned in the last probably four to five years, um, with the county is that for decades. The county has informally, uh, maintained areas within the county, ditches and rights of way. Um, as Dr. Spires has reflected on, um. But we don't have, uh, the appropriate documentation to back up that the county has the right or the obligation. To enter into a lot of that property. We are desperately in need of. Up to date and accurate right of way, um, and ditch maps within the county, and I know that's a budget. Issue that cannot be met this year, next year, probably several years from now. Um, but anytime that we are dealing with, um, the flow of water and anytime that we're dealing with an area that we don't have a very clear. Easement or other access right or maintenance obligation in an area. We have to be extremely careful before we do any kind of engagement there, we have had. A multitude of cases brought against the county, um, for taking related to. Um, water intrusion, but also just the intrusion of equipment, county equipment on real property, we have several. Very active cases against the county right now, and those cases generally are not covered, um, by your insurance carrier. Uh, so that significantly affects your legal budget. Uh, so to the extent that, um, when there's a request from Roden Bridge to me, uh, you know, to look at. Cleaning out a ditch or, um, a causeway or, uh, driveway or what have you, you know, my first question is, do we have an easement? Do we have a document that shows that we should be out there, do we have a document that shows what our obligations are? And for the most part, because, uh, there were just decades and decades where. Um, everything was done informally and people didn't mind if the county brought equipment out and cleaned out a ditch and, uh, you know, they would call their commissioner and the work would. Be done and everybody was happy, um, that's not the state that we live in today, unfortunately.
Thank you.
A lot of the slowdown is coming from legal, um.
Can you cite me some of those cases or put some of those cases in my mailbox, please, ma'am?
Uh, yes, I can give you a litigation update.
Okay, appreciate it.
I know, I know, uh. Mr. Chairman and Mr. Spire wasn't on the board, but you know, it wasn't too long ago when people came in and wanted us to do some cleaning out. Some ditches behind their house and all, and we denied it, you know, because, I mean, and I felt like, you know, we weren't doing that. And, uh. I was agreement myself, I even voted, you know, we couldn't do it. To get on private property or whatever, unless it's causing a problem with the road, in this particular incident. It was, uh, State Road, so we definitely couldn't do anything with State Road. And all, they said water would get all behind their house when it rains a lot, and they do it, cause they're in a low spot. I agree, they do. But it's up to them, it, it ain't blocked up because of cover. It's just low air and water's gonna stand in a low air, you know?
Yes. A couple things, so first of all, I'd like to ask staff to research the last time this, this request was approved. And provide each, each one and what they'll copy of the process that was approved. Secondly, I'd like to move at this time that this, he's been, be approved by the Board of County Commissioners.
I will move to have a second. Ask for a second again.
Okay, so that's for a second, is that right? Thank you, sir.
Well, move on.
All right, uh, on the next item. Is a board approval of public works project for the town of Campbellton. Uh, they've requested assistance with brush cutting on some streets in the town limits. Um, they've received complaints about Dothan Street, Old Howie Two, and a few others. Uh, due to brush scrubbing vehicles and obstructing drivers' line of sight, uh, recommending, uh, board approval of a public works project.
She have a little approval.
Motion, have a second. All in favor?
I do.
Sorry to start changing, Mr. Brown.
That's all right.
Approve or unanimous consent. Move on.
Okay, uh, next item is board approval of Frazier Soul Source Quote. Uh, Roden Bridges received the five pickup trucks that were purchased for the supervisors and Assistant Roden Bridge Director. Uh, we have attached a Soul Source letter from Frazier as well as a quote in the amount of thirty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars. Uh, that will outfit all five of these vehicles with safety lights and other needed equipment, and this is a budgeted item.
Welcome motion to approve the Soul Source Quote, now if I want to see Chairman sign.
Have a motion to. Approve the request, second by Mr. Bryant, all in favor? Raise your hand.
Request board approval of DRMP Taskwork Order for Conneville Highway. This is attached to Taskwork Order Amendment Two for an additional two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. As well as Amendment Three for an additional two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. For DRMP to design the full corridor of BR two seventy-six Conneville Highway. For a total of seven hundred eighty-three thousand, two hundred and seventy-one dollars. With twenty-six thousand, seven sixty-five coming from road construction funds. The rest will be funded through the SCOT program.
And the other comes from where?
Um, twenty-six thousand of it is from our road construction funds and the rest the SCOT program.
Make a motion to approve.
All right, have a motion to approve, second. Mr. Donald Crowe, cut second. All in favor, by hand.
Board approval, the request is for board approval of Poozer Road redesign proposal from Southeastern Surveying. Attaches a proposal for Southeastern Surveying to perform sufficient field work necessary to state the proposed right of way. Acquisition on twenty-one parcels on Poozer Road Drainage Redesign in the amount of sixteen thousand, eight hundred dollars. And this will come from the county match portion. This is a grant funded project, but we do have some match dollars involved, and we're gonna take it from the match.
This is associated with the drainage improvement project that we've been working on for a while.
Yep.
That's the reason for the redesign.
Uh, it's.
I missed the question, I'm sorry.
The reason for the redesign.
So the. Conflicts with other property owners, so having the, and this will also include drafting of legal descriptions for the right of way easements for the entire property. So this will go all the way from Highway seventy-three to, um, termination at, um, Penn Avenue.
I missed the reason somewhere in that explanation.
The. There's been some property owners that don't want to sign the easements, and so it's a, we're, we're redirecting some of the water to properties that will agree to sign the easements.
And this is associated with the redesign to do that.
Correct.
I will, uh, offer a motion to approve the proposal with, uh, Southeastern Surveying. Uh, to perform the, uh, field work, and I'll try to have Chairman sign.
Second. Got a motion, and a second motion, Mr. Donald Crowe. Second, for Mr. Crutchfield. All in favor, say aye. Please, move along.
Request board approval of Fourth Street Final Pay and Certificate of Completion on October twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. Uh, the project was awarded Anderson Columbia in the amount of one hundred and twenty-two thousand, one seventy-three and thirty-two cent. All work has been completed, inspected, and the project is ready to be closed.
In my district, and I'll offer, I'll move to approve the final pay request, a certificate of completion, and authorize you as the chairman sign.
Thanks, sir.
And I will say that that project turned out very well. Uh, Rhett, on, uh, this doesn't have anything to do with that, but on, uh, Hope Church, Hope Road. That work is not complete yet, is it? Is that the only thing that's lacking is the striping? And it does get striped.
Yes.
Do I have a second on that?
A second, that's a second by Mr. Bryant.
All in favor, right?
Okay.
Fourth Street, this is the fourth net on, is county.
Yes, county.
Okay.
Runs from the city line north all the way to, um, Maywood.
Okay.
Okay. Request board approval to renew the non-exclusive facility use agreement with Emerald Coast Paranormal Concept for use of the Russ House. Uh, this has been going on for several years, it's, um, I believe a year to year, uh, agreement, we recommend approval.
Make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Crutchfield, make the motion, I have a second.
I second.
Don, sorry, second. Any discussion? All in favor, right? You down?
Okay, the next item is request board approval of change order number thirteen for Endeavor Convention Center. This change order covers additional cost to remove and replace a hundred and forty-seven point five eight cubic yards of unsuitable soil. With number fifty-seven stone as per the testing agency soil reports. Uh, eighteen thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollars and fifty-eight cents coming from TDC funds.
Is there any difference in, uh. Number fifteen is fourteen. Not on both?
Well, I'll go ahead and say, and y'all can vote once, the next item is board approval of change order number fourteen. Um, this change order deducts nineteen thousand, ninety-three dollars and sixty-nine cent from the contract amount for the direct purchase and sales tax savings.
I need to recuse myself, I thought you had this due to a conflict.
We let you out of.
I'll make a motion, we approve it.
Mr. Bryant?
Question, please, sir.
Two more seconds, do we end, am I right?
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
What, what rendered the soil unsuitable?
What was questioned, Dr. Spire?
What, what made the soil unsuitable that was removed?
Uh, the existing soil had a lot of plus, uh, it was highly plastic clay. And, uh, the structural engineer, uh, asked us to remove it and replace it with, uh, with rock.
Okay, thank you.
That's all the question. Everybody raise your right hand, all right? Uh, Commissioner Donald Crowe, you're accusing him of that. That's best. All right.
Moving to number sixteen. Uh, request board approval of funding agreement for Hurricane Helene. This agreement will allow the county to submit projects for reimbursement of eligible work and expenditures that were performed during Hurricane Helene. This is when we were preparing, not knowing where it would come, so things like the shelter and a number of other items will be submitting for reimbursement at this date.
For that, nice raise your question.
Make a motion to approve it.
I second.
Mr. Crutchfield. Motion, Mr. Bryant's approval of the second. Everybody with the right hand. All right, move on.
Request board approval of water treatment agreement with Kim Aqua. Agreement will provide a professional water treatment program at the courthouse and health department, the annual cost is two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Uh, the previous vendor was four thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars and sixty-eight cent. And, uh, so this is a cost saving.
Where were those funds come from, Ms. Daniels, do we know, is that part of the courthouse? Funding or?
The health department also.
Yeah, thank you. I'll offer a motion to approve the agreement, and I'll try to have Chairman sign.
Motion to, um, Commissioner Donald Crowe, I have a second. Commissioner Crutchfield. All in favor, raise your hand. All right, move on.
Request board approval to reject bids for twenty-three, twenty-four dash thirty-three Ag Center concessionaire. Um, after much consideration, the chamber has actually withdrawn their bid. Uh, and so we're just asking for you to formally reject those bids, and that'll close out that process.
We're motion to, uh, reject the bids and compatible with the, uh, recommendation.
Second.
I will motion by Commissioner Donald Crowe, second by Dr. Spire. All in favor.
Request board approval to award RV twenty-four, twenty-five dash zero for Culvert Pipe Annual Contract to J and G Culvert. Uh, we received two bids on eleven, fourteen, twenty-four, based on submissions of pricing per foot, staff recommends that we award this. To, uh, Culvert Pipe Annual Contract to J and G Culvert.
Just the same vendors that we've been previously dealing with, different vendor?
The board's pleasure.
Make a motion, Mr. Crutchfield.
I have a motion in a second. To approve. All in favor. Move along.
Request board approval to award twenty-four, twenty-five dash zero one Shangri-La Elevated Boardwalk Construction to Modelis Construction. We received seven bids for this construction. Um, and after a review of the bids, we do recommend awarding it to Modelis Construction for four hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollars. And this is coming from grant funds.
Is this at Blue Springs?
Yes, sir.
And this actually is, uh, move. This is for the eight foot line, four walk, and it includes all of the alternates except for a small spur that goes off somewhere.
We originally, uh, discussed running the boardwalk uphill away from the, uh, the shoreline area. But decided to, since it was higher and drier, leave that section also, the boardwalk tied into existing grade, and then it'll just be, uh. Existing soil for the rest of the trail.
And this going in at our recreation area there at Blue Springs?
Yes, sir, so it actually connects Blue Springs to Shangri-La. Um, we've been doing a lot of improvements up there, and this will allow for Blue Springs parkgoers to have more access on the property.
They'll be able to access the old Shangri-La site and then the overlook, and then there'll also be a floating dock down at the water level, is that correct?
We have not discussed the floating dock, but there are additional funds in the grant, even with this, uh, contract amount, so we're gonna be reviewing that moving forward.
They could swim down there, couldn't they, some Blue Springs?
They do, they can, and they do often, yes, sir.
I'm familiar with that.
So, so it does not include the floating, I thought it does.
When I looked at it, this was just the, I forget the linear feet for the eight foot elevated, but did not include the, uh, floating section around the spring bend.
Well, I mean, I'm looking at it, we're approving, how much are we approving, four hundred and twenty-eight, twenty-eight?
It does say floating dock.
Okay, I overlooked that, my apologies.
It's on page two sixty-three listed in the.
It's an engineered project.
Yes, sir.
Many years ago, there's any, there was some discussion about, discussions about doing something to the building. Has that been something that's been ongoing in the last few years or?
We have discussed, none of this will touch the building, correct?
That would be some of the additional funds in the grant to look at, so the building has been, uh, demolished minus slab. So it's just a flat surface, and we're looking at using some of these funds to put something back, don't know what, that'll be part of the discussion once we get further into construction. Reconstruction.
If you recall, Dr. Spires, at some time way back, we, our firm was engaged to go out there and do some design work on the building. I think it was fairly well demolished or destroyed or, uh, damaged, uh, as a result of a hurricane, was it not?
Yes, there are two trees come in the roof and shifted the roof structure, so it knocked the trusses off alignment. So it was determined by structural engineers at that time, many years ago prior to this project, that they would need to be demolished.
Okay. There's no plans to do anything right now, but.
But thi- this will actually, as, as Mr. Daniel said, uh, this boardwalk will increase access up to that overlook and then also allow the, uh, the vendor that's out there now that has rents, uh, uh, kayaks and canoes, I guess. Uh, they'll be able to actually pull up and, uh, uh, offload at this floating dock. And, uh, it's been a very nice improvement, very nice improvement.
Thank you.
Yeah, you already recommended, watch the board, yeah.
I'll offer a motion to, uh, uh, prove the request to award the project to Monolith Construction, authorize you to sign.
Second. Motion and a second. Those are both, Commissioner Donald, really. All in favors.
Okay. Next item is request board approval of FDP Grant Agreement, uh, P two, five, zero, zero, two for Cypress Park Improvements. This recreational improvement grant will allow us to build additional playgrounds and an outdoor restroom facility as well as expanding the trail system and improving security. I would directly recommend approving the agreement.
So move, Mr. Chairman. Second.
This is about Commissioner Bryant, most of Commissioner Bryant. Taken by Mr. Crickfield, approve the Cypress Park improvement. All in favor? You down with me? I don't have one or two more.
Uh, request board approval of land swap for Project Lava. So under the terms of this land swap, Chapola Nurseries Incorporated will need an eighty foot right of way to Jackson County and Jackson County will need, uh, the existing sixty foot right of way to the owners. The road shift to the south is to accommodate the proposed traffic signal at Penn Avenue and the new city street, Charlie's Way. This section of New Poozer Road will also have a city water line installed within the county right of way by permit from the county, which has already been approved.
So looking at the site plan, um, the new Circle K is, at one, at one point I saw some very preliminary plans where the Pusher Road would actually, the traffic on Pusher Road going out to Penn Avenue would actually be directed through the parking lot of the Circle K. That's, that's no longer the case.
Well, David Melvin's here to answer all of your in-depth questions on this, uh, design.
No, no, it is, yeah. So, uh. Yeah, yes, sir. So Charlie's Way is a new road that will come off and, uh, the, um, Pusher Road will tee into Charlie's Way. So it's not through the parking lot or.
Looking at this diagram. Circle K is.
Circle, Circle K and Blue Beacon Truck Wash.
Will be located in this area.
Are gonna be in that area, correct?
And the retention pond that's located down on the southeast corner, that is serving that new development.
That's correct, all, all that, uh, development. Yeah, when they did the traffic study and we coordinated with the housing development, uh, company, uh, Raj Coleman and provided, Howard Hodges group actually did the traffic study for, for it and it justified a traffic signal there. And so you get to have sufficient storage on what's now, what will be Charlie's Way, you've got to pull Pusher Road back. So there, it'll be a busy intersection there, which is good economic development, uh, growth that we can talk about, but.
And the easement for the city utilities, those utilities are cutting across that piece of property and going to family dollar distribution.
That's correct, yeah. Yeah, that's, uh, city easementness there as well. And the city will have the stormwater pond, it'll be a regional stormwater pond facility there as well. City obtained grant funds to do that.
The right of way for the old part of Pusher Road that is being deeded to the Reeve family?
To the Reeve family, yeah. And so it works out pretty good, it makes pretty nice out parcel there. And at one time, we thought we could bring the road in closer, uh, up there and then it, it would just be dead land. But by bringing it in further to the south, uh, there, it accomplishes two things. You get a lot more stacking lane, because it'll kind of be like the pilot trucks off out there. There'll be a lot of, uh, trucks, because this, this, uh, Circle K will have diesel fueling islands. And then the, uh, Blue Beacon Truck Wash, uh, I'd never heard of them before until we got in this project. They're, they're big, they'll, uh, they'll employ fifty to eighty people at the truck wash. And so they're, they're a pretty big operation that'll go there as well, so.
And so access to both of those developments will be off of Charlie's Way.
That's correct.
There will be access off of Penn Avenue with two seventy six.
It, it'll be on Charlie's Way, Charlie's Way will become the new road that connects to Conso Highway. Right there, Pusher Road will connect into the Charlie's Way.
But I mean, to get to the two new developments, Circle K and Blue Beacon, you'll have to come off of Penn Avenue onto Charlie's Way and then into that development.
That's, that's right, that's right, yeah, it'll be the road that'll be there, you know, similar setup to most interstate interchanges.
Go ahead.
If I'm looking at this right, there's gonna be kind of an island piece of property there between Penn Avenue, Charlie's Way.
That's right, about a two acre out parcel.
Okay, that's, that's, about two acres.
Yes. And that's why I was saying it used, you know, when we were first looking at it, it just gonna be dead land. But with two acres, then that sets it up for fast food residents or business. So it, it turned out the traffic study really kind of helped us to pull that down and make that a viable, uh, out parcel for more development out there.
Well, I like this layout much better than the original layout.
Yes, yeah, we went through several iterations on that and then, like I say, the traffic engineer. Then we worked with Raj Coleman, because they were concerned about the residential and, and cover that and with Circle K and Blue Beacon and DOT and so, yeah. Trying to make everybody happy, you know?
Couple of weeks.
And have a good solution, uh.
Well, that's the main thing, yeah. Well, I'll also motion to approve the land swap and, uh, authorize chairman, what's with the signing?
My second.
Motion by Commissioner Donald Crowe, second by Commissioner Bryant. Everybody approve? You approve, Mr. Bryant?
Yes, sir.
All right, get down, Mr. Chair.
Okay, um, so we saved the best for last.
Oh, yeah.
This is our, uh, culvert discussion. It's a, um, in September of twenty twenty four, the board directed staff to begin selling and installing driveway culvert, um, which was extremely well intentioned, but when we got into the actual logistics of that, we've identified, uh, multiple issues that certainly can be overcome, but we want to know that everyone has all the same information, uh, before we, we move forward with implementing that. Rhett, do you mind kind of walking them through, or do you want Tim? Oh, Carrie, come on up, Carrie. So Carrie is the person who really dug into fully understanding all that would be required to implement this and she's gonna walk you through it.
So we do have, um, county ordinance ninety four dash zero four on the books, has been on the books since ninety four, that provides construction alteration and impact cost to be borne by the applicant. Um, Michelle Jordan had also provided the understate law, the V O C C adopts a rule or policy by ordinance, it can only be amended by ordinance. So that creates conflict with the decision in, um, September of last year. We, uh, pretty much identified the primary issue that we were having with the residents installing the culverts as just the lack of guidance on our side. It's something we've discussed internally for a very long time. The, um, I did want to reiterate that when I researched this last year, I reached out to, you know, several counties and cities and whatnot. The, there were five that, um, just in the group that I researched that do make the property owners responsible for the installation. Several of them also charge initial inspection fees, permitting fees, even a follow-up inspection fee. Uh, the putting us in a situation to sell these culverts would mean we do need to charge sales tax. To me, this takes business away from our local vendors if we are buying our culverts through our contract and then turning around and selling it to the public, we're taking that business away from our local vendors. Uh, I know, i- if you remember from, two of you were not on the board at the time, but in September, we did point out that we utilized the twenty twenty three driveway permit figures to come up with some dollars and cents and how, what this would mean for our department to start installing the culverts. Uh, at the time, in twenty twenty three, out of the permits that were issued, eighty of them required, uh, culverts to be installed. The average, and it, mind you, actual installation costs vary so much by the road. Um, if they, if they're good with just a twenty or twenty-four foot pipe versus if they need a thirty to forty foot pipe. There are very many factors that are involved in determining how much. But the average that I had come up with was one thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars.
That for the culvert and the install?
That is not for the culvert, that is strictly for our, our cost, that is not.
Figured out.
Yeah, yeah, that's, so that's labor, equipment and primarily dirt, uh, if we, if we don't have to put a more expensive top, say lime rock or recycled for stabilization, we won't. If we can keep it packed down and insecure with dirt, then we, we let it ride with that. If it proves to be an ongoing issue, then we revisit um, that, that situation, but, um, that's for, just again, using the twenty twenty-three figures, that actually works out to a hundred and six thousand dollars a year. Again, not including the cost of the culvert.
Uh, my, my intent personally, intent on it was to, uh, I know most of the driveway pipes is done by people paying abhorrent tax. And, uh, homeowners, no, not renters. If it's a renter, homeowner on, they rent from, it's one that's responsible for the driveway. So I, I would want to try, you know, go back the old way we're used to, they buy the pipe and from a con, wherever you vendor, like you say, and they get it delivered and then we just install it. Which I know that's what you're talking about, costs a thousand dollars or so to install one pipe. Uh, I, I, I didn't, myself, I think Mr. Peacock was wanting, you know, to buy the pipe from us. But to me, I wouldn't, my intent wasn't wanting that, I just wanted to kind of go back to the old way. It used to be.
Right, and, and, and you were both on the board, I believe, when, because you, you know, I've been here for, for a minute. So when I started, the property owner provided the culvert and bands of mitered ends. If any of the culvert related materials, they provided that, they bought it, had it delivered, picked it, whatever, that was on them. And then, yes, we did come out and do the install. Um, and, and there was, there was no charge for the install, the permit inspections, no, nothing. Um, I want to say roughly twenty twelve, twenty fourteen, somewhere in that general neighborhood is when it was changed. A lot of that was for cost saving on the county end. But then also puts it more in line with the ordinance on the books. So even at the time, based on how this stands, it wasn't being done correctly. So if the intent is to change procedure, the ordinance does need to reflect it and we can absolutely work together on, you know, with Ms. Jordan and get something ready for you guys to review.
Yeah. You, you finish, Mr. Crickfield.
I would like to see, let them buy the pipe and get it delivered or whatever material while it is there and, and we install it. That would be what I would, I'd like to make most of that.
At no cost, at no, at no cost.
And maybe no cost to the homeowner.
How much that too?
That would definitely dirt or whatever it takes to put the driveway pipe in. Now, this is one thing you might want to include, few people that may want to, two pipes. That.
I actually haven't thought about that.
That'd be the initial one pipe, if they want another pipe, then you come up maybe a fee to do, do that, put that pipe in or either they had to put, have it put in theirself. But we would do the initial one to get them into their house.
We do have several situations like that where people want a circular driveway, they want a driveway going directly to the home, one to a boat shed, one to a field. Um, there, there are very many situations that are like that.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it'd be a question of that, but I, I would, I'd like to make a motion to do the actual driveway to somebody's home.
I'll settle that. Can you, can you hold that and let me ask one more question, please? If I may. How much activity did you have on that, what was going on? How many times, how much activity, how mu- how many times did you sell a cover and or sell a ditch or give them a ditch? How many times did you have that over a period of ninety days, sixty days, ninety days?
So we haven't sold any of the culverts yet, because once we realize that this is counter to the ordinance on the books.
I think, I think he may be asking, what, use the eighty permits?
Yeah, eight, eight.
Okay.
Eighty, for, for a year period.
Like how many could we anticipate in a year?
Absolutely.
I mean, roughly that, right? I, I, it could, it could be anywhere from sixty to a hundred, it just depends. And even though they don't require a culvert, they may still require filler or some other material, because there's not necessarily a ditch that's required. But to make a smoother transition as they, uh, for ingress and egress to their parcel from the roadway, we may have to haul in fill, fill material or again, rock, recycle, whatever's appropriate for that area.
Yeah, just for clarification, the current, the ordinance is currently on the books. Spells out that the owner provides material to culvert.
There should be a copy in your packet and it does say, um, which I printed.
And that the county do the installation, is that the way that it reads now or?
No, they are responsible for everything, so, um, be borne by the applicant, including alterations which are required by law or which are made at the request of the county board. The applicant shall also bear the cost of any future alteration or any connection which is required by the board due to increased or altered traffic flows generated by changes in the facilities or nature of business conducted. Um, so it's, it kind of, it, it covers a lot.
Sure, any, any.
It's kind of, it covers a lot and it's on the, um, the owner.
Every day.
So, so there's a lot to look at and that's why we were, our landings are rescind this September twenty twenty four decision. Let us readdress this as a group and bring some, some options back and also get with Ms. Jordan on how to, you know, properly word that ordinance. Make sure we're covering all of our bases, because there are so many variations when you come to, when it comes to the connections. There are a lot of variations, we want to make sure that we are doing our due diligence to cover all of those potential situations, if at all possible. That way we don't have to keep coming back and readdressing.
Mr. Chairman, can I add just one other thing to consider? And I talked to Commissioner Branch about it, that one of the issues that I see is, okay, let's say there's eighty to a hundred of these in a year. Uh, but so far, at least historically or in recent past, most of those are landing in his district, Compass Lake. So I think at least, um, either his, his crew, who you all have the same issues, which is grading, drainage, these things. I just want everyone to be fully aware that takes away from that, because we don't have a culvert crew, so to speak. There was the same people that you want to be doing these other things, doing this. Uh, but it's really going to mostly impact District Four from daily work that they're doing.
Basically, what you're saying, what your concern is, is if we move forward with having the county be responsible for installing culverts countywide, that's gonna take away from the work that needs to be done.
Well, I figured they're putting a man, they can't be somewhere else grading the road or putting.
Well, it's a convenience, is what it is, basically.
I went ahead and I, I put together an average like of employee hours, so that would include our squad truck and our dump truck crew. And on average, it's eleven employee hours per installation.
How do, how do the municipalities, I, I think I'm right in saying the city of Mariana, if you put a culvert in in the city of Mariana, the landowner, property owners, your. if you put a covert in in the city of Mariana, the landowner, property owners are responsible for the, all of those costs.
I'll have to double check with them.
Is that correct?
But, but it's true.
I actually spoke with Clay yesterday, and the way the city handles it is the property owner purchases the pipe and then the city employees do the installation. But similar to Mr. Crossfield's suggestion.
You satisfied with your motion as it stated any second then, Don.
Yeah, yeah, to, to. To let the person furnish a material or the pipe, maybe even the mitered end, if they had, had a mitered end and all that. That, get it on site and the county put it in.
Go back to the original way.
Yeah, go back to the original way.
Is that regardless of any, I mean, is that just for a single pipe or is that for whatever needs that happen?
Well, I, I could see the spin. I remember one time it was brought up by Mr. Green, you know, somebody coming in and want a circular drive. Well, we could do the initial pipe to get them into their house, and but a, after they're going to either, if we put in, they get, he may not want to get into charging, they're going to have to put the pipe in if they want to circle their drive. I would say that will cut down his cost a little bit to the county. But it'd be the initial driveway going into the house.
So can I make a suggestion, kind of a, a caveat, if you will, since the Avalorum discussion comes up every time? Could I make a suggestion that we, uh, maybe do the original installation as part of their development process? Um, but not for, you know, recreation land, farmland, or anything like that. But if it's a new development coming on county property that goes through community development and we track that process for each project, that we would do the initial one-time installation and then, you know, maintenance thereafter. Um, that way we're not running all over the county just putting it, because what's happened since September also is people that's been kind of waiting on a covert this whole time. You know, reluctant to pay any money. They've come back and they've put in their applications because we're going to do it for free, and I don't think that's fair. They should have done it in years past. A lot of people have unapproved accesses and things of that nature. Um, but that would drastically cut down on the burden of the department, and it'll also help those individuals that are wanting to develop and, uh, build in Jackson County.
Should we, just as a thought, should we table this? And think about it for two weeks or a month?
We can do that, but I don't have a problem with that, but you said it was going to be a, a downfall for Commissioner Grant and Compass Lake. What, what, what did you mean by that? I mean?
Well, i- if we get, we have more down there than any other district.
Yeah.
Right now. Uh, if all, all District Four employees are down there putting pipes in, somebody needs to be grading the roads and fixing everything else. Well, they may be down there putting pipes in.
We track these permits by district as well. We note that so we can pull those numbers together for you.
One last, so if it's tabled or, or whatever, what will, the process needs to be is whatever the recommendation is, we would have to amend the existing ordinance, set a public hearing and go through that process as well as staff, Kerry, myself, work on a policy that there's an expectation that if someone comes in, you're, you know, you're providing the materials, there's still an agreement as part of the permit process that would need to be amended. And then the expectation on the work to be completed. That's another thing I'm concerned about when someone comes in and does their application, they want to see somebody out there tomorrow, but we just, we all know that's not feasible. So we need to set our expectations ahead of time for the citizens that are making the application.
That will hit you.
How much does a driveway permit cost?
We don't have a charge for it anymore. We, we were charging fifty dollars, but that was rescinded a few years ago.
That's, that's one of the considerations that, that I can kind of take into account is that we're not, we're not, we're not charging permit fees, we're not charging inspection fees either pre or post. So, I mean, that, that to me is a benefit for property owners.
Yeah, we, we aren't charging, it, when you compare other municipalities, we are not charging like they do. So we weren't at the time.
And currently the ordinance, current ordinance right now puts every bit of the burden on the property owner. So if we do anything different, then we need to. We need to go through a public hearing.
And, and, and because of the September decision, we would like some direction on how to proceed with the permits that came in between nine twenty-four to today.
How many of those were there?
I don't recall. I did look, but I'm sorry, did not note it down.
I think it's like twenty-four. It's a, it's a pretty good number.
That was the answer I was looking for a while ago when you.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, probably more once, if, if we go the old way, there'd probably be more permit go. Probably, you might not have got a permit for some, might have done it yourself.
You would be amazed at how many unpermitted connections there are. And so when we come across those, we have to send them to code enforcement. Because there's even an ordinance that stipulates.
If, if we go with a county putting in a pipe, then, and they do, they'll go that way, but they, they before the county do it, they had to get a permit. So that's probably going to look at the permit. So, uh, if the property owner are doing it all theirself, some of them does it theirself, some of them don't get a permit. Uh, uh, a few of them do. I'm sure it's a lot less than would be if the county did.
That's correct.
So, you know, you.
We have had quite the influx of residents coming back to the counties.
I just was trying to help the property owners some, you know. About the property tax and stuff like that. A lot, and it would kindly, kind of like giving back a little bit. You know, I know you're not giving it all back, but it's helping on a little bit.
The other thing that that does, it does give us some, um, assurance that it's being done the right way.
Yeah.
Suppose if they go out and do it themselves, we don't know necessarily if they're doing it the right way and not being adverse to other properties or.
And, and Mr. Branch, it may be putting in more files in here or not just the way it is, at least somebody moving in.
Yeah.
To do that, and you know, uh, that, that don't matter. If, if, uh, my district only has ten and he has thirty, it just falls that way, you know, that's as far as.
Yeah, not many times will the people be local.
I, I don't think we ought to do more than, if we do that, I don't think, I think one should be the limit. They want three or four.
Yeah.
Three or four.
Yeah, one, one.
Do one, they face the other.
Initial pipe to get into the yard. If they want another one, they gotta do it, do it theirself, or if we do it, we charge them, but if you don't want to do that, they just get a contractor to put in.
Motion for amendment.
I don't have a problem if you want to wait and, and to see what they come up with.
Can I make a recommendation?
Got a motion in the second on the floor. Y'all want it all?
How does it go that way?
As far as the one permit?
Yeah.
One driveway, one covert.
Yeah.
Is your, your motion didn't stipulate that?
One driveway, yeah. Okay, well, I didn't say it in a motion, but, yeah, well, uh, I make a motion that, that we, uh, you know, start the customer getting the pipe. We install, install the pipe they got. And for us, being delayed, if they get a contractor, they're going to have to wait.
Right.
So it's no problems. They got to make sure the pipes are, so, uh, and for the initial driveway to get in their house.
But that does not require them to buy that from us. I said that, your motion does not require them to buy that pipe from us.
No, 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 they got to buy it from a vendor. We don't sell pipes.
Right.
You said that we've eliminated the permitting process?
No, the permitting process is still in place. The fee that we were charging has, has been.
All right, in that process, we're stipulating the size of the pipe and.
So the district supervisor, they'll come in and, and do the permit or they, we actually have worked with community development, so there's a copy of that permit in a development order. So they'll send that to us and, um, we've actually seen a huge influx in permits by including it with that packet. A lot of people didn't realize they needed to come to our office for that purpose.
Your, with your second. Be agreeable to.
Just one said, right, just one pipe.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor of that motion in the second, see if five are raised in the right hand. All opposed, Commissioner Donovan.
And how would you like us to proceed until we get the ordinance adjusted to? Again, our, our recommendation was to rescind this, the nine twenty-four twenty-four motion.
So I feel like you.
Your motion to hold that there.
So September twenty-fourth of last year is when this change was made, so we request that that motion be rescinded because it is, it, it's opposing the ordinance.
It's different in the motion.
Put us back.
We just did.
Yeah. And so then what we'll do is, if, if you will vote to rescind that, that essentially, I, again, we still need some direction on how you want to handle the permits that came in after that. Um, but in the meantime, until we can get the ordinance adjusted, uh, the, then we can maybe go back to the way it was prior to.
All for motion to rescind the September twenty-fourth was a twenty-fourth motion. And I think those permits that have come in in between, we need, instead of making them purchase the pipe, because right now they're under, they're under the impression that they're going to have to purchase that pipe.
From us.
We tell them that that's no longer the case. And that they, they have to purchase their own pipes and fall basically in compliance with what we just did. Unless they've already bought the pipe, which you've not, didn't, you have not issued any permits, so have you?
We have issued permits. We have not sold any culverts.
It would be no different if they bought it from a vendor that they hadn't purchased from y'all yet. So if, if, if you, if some got a permit thinking that we going to sell them five, just call them and tell them that they need to purchase from the vendor.
Right, so the, the issue will still stand that even if they purchase that covert from a local vendor, if you're, if you're, um, expecting us to still do the install, that is still against the ordinance as it stands. So ideally what we would do is go back to what it was prior to September fourth of last year.
Yeah, so, um, all you need to do is grant a variance to your current ordinance until we can get it updated. We've done this before. I hate to call it a blanket variance, but you are acknowledging we are varying from our ordinance. We're going to do the, the guidelines that y'all just outlined uh, to the best of our ability because there will be ten scenarios that come up we haven't thought about yet. But we'll do that with those that have, so for instance, if it's a one-time thing, the criteria y'all just gave us, we'll apply that the best we can. And then in the meantime, we'll be drafting a new ordinance that complies with the criteria you all just gave us that'll come before y'all in the coming meetings.
I've got a, I've got a motion on the floor that we rescind the September twenty-fourth action. So this. Got a motion in a second.
All right, and the variant.
That was just on rescinding the September twenty-fourth action. Do it that separately.
All in favor of that motion, if I understand it right, raise your hand.
I was going to ask for clarification. Sorry. I'm not so sure I understand what was.
The September twenty-fourth motion that we will purchase the, the, the citizen will purchase the covert from us and we'll install it. And so we're asking y'all to rescind that because we decided that isn't a good idea.
I thought they were going to purchase a pipe from us.
Yes.
So we rescinding that where they want pipe, but we don't, don't need to rescind.
Well, I say you just rescind the motion, and then you all, just before this, gave us a new motion that says they'll purchase their own pipe, we'll install it one time.
More pipe.
And Mr. Branches had to with one thing. Now we on a different motion.
Yeah. My motion is to rescind, to rescind the September twenty-fourth action, which is in conflict with what we just passed. So that was my motion. And we had a second from Commissioner.
Had a motion in a second.
This is the rescind.
Okay, now one more.
Write it down.
We need a motion to give a blanket variance to our ordinance that will allow us to do what y'all said in the first motion.
All right, I, I, I'm so moved to that.
A blanket variance to all of those that have applied for permits in between now and September twenty-fourth.
And that will apply until we get the new ordinance.
I'll second that motion.
All right, you, you want to vote on that motion as well? All right. Donald Crowe and three other.
What, what is the blanket ordinance?
Because our current ordinance, um, says something. It just means, I mean, it just means you're acknowledging that you're, we're about to do something completely against what your ordinance actually says about culverts because your, your ordinance is something totally different than anything we discussed today.
So what we're going to charge?
We're not going to charge.
For anything?
That we don't currently charge and we're not proposing any charging. We're just saying, you buy it, we'll install it. One per developed property.
Bring us a motion back.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll start putting something together.
Go ahead, Mr. Dan.
I think with all of that, a, a good next step would be go ahead and set up a public hearing for February eleventh. We can have the new proposed ordinance provided. Uh, we can go ahead and start the advertisement, get all, everything in the newspaper for public involvement. And then we can finalize the entire subject matter on the eleventh.
That go along with what you think, Dan?
Yes, sir.
All for a motion that we, uh, ha- hold a public hearing on the driveway ordinance on February eleventh.
Yes, sir.
At, at, uh.
Got a motion, Commissioner Donovan, thank you. All in favor, see if five are raised in the right hand.
Okay, now we move into the, um, matters of the public. If anyone has any thing that was not on the agenda, this is the time to present that.
Anybody have anything from the public? Won't come far, come right on.
Just real quick, I was thinking this thing, we, we meet, um, about monthly to talk about all things endeavor that's going out there and a lot of exciting things are going out there with the convention center underway. Uh, if you go out there, our next step apartments is, uh, well underway. We have a little different color green than we've got out there, but, uh, but it's a beautiful building that's, uh, happening and then Chrome, uh, taking, uh, over some of the buildings out there are real attractive and thank you, Mr. Long, that he's extending, uh, using grant, city grant funds around water and sewer to service the, uh, facilities out there. One thing that came up is, uh, across from the gym, the convention center is a building that's called the Carbon Dried Building. And it's a building that, uh, we chose to save from a historic standpoint and it's a, it's a nice building, but the roof on it is, and, uh, since the hurricane, we haven't done anything. And so it hasn't had bad leaks, but there's a few leaks, but if we don't get a roof on it, then we'll lose that, that building. And so I'd like to ask if you could ask staff to obtain quotes just for you to consider on putting a, uh, a new roof, uh, on that building. I'm thinking it's probably in the twenty thousand dollar range, but then get those quotes and, and see if you can do that. But if we don't do it, we're going to lose that.
What building is that?
It's, uh, it's, so where the gym is, it's a big white building. It, it's right next to the, uh, smoke stacks there and, um, it's one that it, it has a, a lot of character. It, it'll take a lot to redo it, but, but it'll be eligible for historic. Yeah, there's not, it is, uh, but if we don't put a roof on it, you know, that's where you lose, uh, buildings, uh. And, uh, one of the older buildings, uh, maybe we made demo on it and, and Willanne and I are going to sell the, the other building on a French restaurant out there, right? We've got some, we've got some, uh, vision, uh, for that. And then, and, and perhaps they get quotes, we're doing, uh, the, uh, old dining hall is under selective demolition right now, uh, using, uh, grant funds on it. Across from it is the clinic and that clinic has a retrofit roof on it. Uh, that's, that's pretty ugly. It's got a concrete flat roof on it. So if you may want to look at getting quotes, i- it's just ugly and it should have demoed it, uh, originally, just that roof. It, it's just been, of course, it's kind of thought, uh, thought, but anyway, we, cause we may get a good quote from Great Southern demolition, this demo and the, the, uh, the museum over there, but, uh, if you're interested, it'd be nice to get a quote and just see what it costs to, to take that off. And trying to get rid of a few of the ugly things out there, putting some nice things out there. Still got a few ugly things out there.
Mr. Miller, don't you think we should have requested the government to roof all those buildings before we took it?
We, we, we tried to squeeze as much, you know, sometimes you get a gift horse and it's got cavities.
And sometimes you don't have representation.
I'll offer a motion, Chairman, to, uh, authorize staff to get a quote or quotes on putting a new shingle roof on the carpentry building. Also, uh, with that quote, we need to get a per unit price for replacing any damage by the decking. And then also get a separate quote on removing the rec- the metal retrofit roof off the old medical building. The old dental clinic.
Yeah.
And as part of that, we need to figure out a way of putting some type of temporary roof on it.
Yeah.
I, I don't know whether, what that would be, but, but once they pull all that retrofit framing off of that, where they fasten through it, probably the old built-up roof, they may just need to.
I'll get out there with you. Maybe able to do spray foam.
Maybe.
On it, that may be the most cost effective.
Not a real cost effective roof.
But we can get quotes on that and bring it back to you.
They get separate quotes so that we.
Yeah, yes, yes.
Do only a portion of it.
Pick and choose what you wanna do, yes.
I would suggest that we also need to probably identify some source of funding. Good ideas, but we gotta find it.
That's why you, you, you can pick and choose, choose and then. Carpenter builder may bill eligible for TDC funding, but, uh, uh, cause it's, it'll be a part of the historic things out there. But you're right, you know, scratch your head about where the funding's gonna come from.
Want to add that to your motion?
Well, yeah, yeah, once we know what those prices are, then we can, uh, you know, figure out, before we move forward, we'll, we'll need to identify fund for sure.
Motion for Commissioner Donald Crowe. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Thank you.
Does that wind up your agenda? Or do we have anything else?
We, we do need to do a round table. I have a few things, but go ahead.
I talked to you a couple of weeks ago about increasing our fixed asset. Uh, requiring for stickers to be coincide with the state has. I don't know if y'all thought about that anymore, but we, we've got a bunch of property sheets. Uh, we got some yesterday for some, uh, I think heaters that, that we mount on the wall. They were like eleven or twelve hundred dollars piece. I'm gonna have to put a sticker on each one of those. I, I promise you, if them heaters go missing, somebody gonna see them and, and do it. So, um, I would like for y'all to, to think about that again, maybe address that. Let us raise it up to five thousand. Uh, and, and that'll take a tremendous load off of my staff, having to go out and get stickers and then inventory everything. Now, if there's something that the director of a department says, hey, I've got these fancy little gizmos and they were only twenty-five hundred dollars piece and I'd like for y'all to make sure y'all inventory them every year, we can still do that. But it would just keep us from having, um, uh, the desk, uh, you know, when you have a vault new desk out there. With Jeffrey goes out there and his desk gone one day, um, he, he's gonna call somebody, I'm sure. Uh, and, and it was fifteen hundred dollars. So it, it would keep, you know, it'd keep me from having to look at probably fifty percent of, of what I'm looking at every year.
So current, what's, what's the threshold now? And you're asking to increase that from the thousand to five?
To five thousand. What the state did probably, I don't know, five or six years ago, because that's the same thing. I'm sure the college, y'all probably had the same thing. You know, you got a bunch of stuff that's in that thousand to five thousand range. Uh, and, and there may be like laptops that we still want to do it for. I, I don't know. I know Fred monitors those. He's got his own system where he looks at those.
When do you need that, Matt? Right away?
ASAP.
I'm moving, we, uh, we approve the course request, raising to five thousand.
Okay. All in, in discussion. All in place, pick your hand up there.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Staff thanks.
Yes, sir. Come on.
My thank you. Good morning. William Long with the City of Marianna. Thank you for the, uh, opportunity to spend a few minutes, uh.
I'm sorry for making you wait. I'd have brought you.
No, 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 that's, I'm, I'm happy to wait my turn. No problem at all, no problem at all. All of us are aware of the proposed, uh, increase rate increases with, uh, Florida Public Utilities is proposing. And that we've all been a part of a, uh, part of the, uh, I guess pushback, if you will, with regards to the increases. So the City of Marianna, I'm welcoming back. I've had a conversation with an attorney, uh, who was involved with the city quite extensively many years ago when the city was taking a look at, uh, buying the FPU franchise, Mr. Chef Wright, Robert Sheffel Wright. And had a conversation with him and in thirty words or less, he told me three things. Number one, the letter writing to the PSC is gonna do us no good. A letter to the governor is gonna do us no good. The only opportunity we have, the only chance we have to make some difference in getting a lower amount of increase or mitigating that increase in some fashion is to have someone, an attorney, present at the settlement proceedings. I did not know that the proposed increase goes to a settlement proceeding. But our only chance is to have someone representing us at this settlement agreement at the settlement table. This gentleman is going to send me an engagement letter. And I am going to ask the city to allow us to engage with this attorney, to have him there representing the City of Marianna at the settlement table when this goes to settlement in March. I asked the attorney if it were possible, okay, if the county wanted to join and be represented at the settlement table by this same guy. And my intention is to also ask the school board. Because, uh, Hunter was at the public hearing, uh, last week. And so what I'd like to do, he's gonna charge an hourly wage, an hourly fee rather, that'd be split between the three of us. And so that amount is three hundred bucks an hour. And so, um, which is a lot of money, but it's in keeping with, uh, with, with what, uh, is with what we see today. So I'd like to throw it out there for your consideration. You may want to talk about it at some point. I'll have the letter from Mr. Wright, uh, sometime today likely. Our commission will meet in a special session tomorrow, uh, at which time I plan to ask them to, uh, to allow us to go forward. But, uh, would very much like, if you so choose, uh, to join, uh, in this effort where the county would have a representative, the school board would have a representative, city would have it, all be the same person, of course, but, uh, someone fighting. You know, and to me, I think we have to, we have to demonstrate to our citizens our push, our pushback. I think we have to make a legitimate, uh, reasonable effort to, 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 to make some, some difference and try and lessen the amount of the increase uh, for small city budgets, small county budgets, for individuals who live here who can least afford in lots of ways to take on an additional amount of money for, for their living expenses. And so I just think personally, on behalf of the city, that we have to put up some sort of a, uh, legitimate, uh, effort to make some difference in this, uh, in this request. Now, nothing to do with our local guys here at the Florida Public Utilities. We work with them. We live with them. They have my number. I have theirs. We've known each other for years and years, same as your folks, you have no difference. And so this is not about them, but it is about what it's going to do to your budget, what it's gonna do to our budget, what it's gonna do to the school board budget and what it's gonna do for the people and citizens who live in Marianna.
Florida Public Utilities. Thank you. I've talked also to mention to you, I've talked to the school board people.
Yes, sir.
And I feel like they're gonna come on board with it. And probably Farm Bureau as well.
Yeah, gotcha. I will communicate with your county administrator, uh, once, uh, once I have the document and she can communicate with you as, as, as necessary. But, uh, my intent is to, is to ask, uh, uh, the city council to allow me to engage, uh, for this purpose. And I would love to have the three entities that we talked.
And you plan on doing that at a special meeting tomorrow?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Say it was three hundred dollars an hour.
Correct.
Per.
No, sir. Split three ways.
No, three ways. Or, or how many other ways we can.
Yeah.
Get someone to come on with.
You can make it three hundred. He wanted a little more, but I asked him to kind of dumb it down a little bit for us. And, uh, a hundred bucks a piece makes it easy math for those of us who are, those high school dropouts.
I just wanted to share that I also have been in, uh, contact with our lobbyist Alan Sussky. And he is making some contacts, but he highly recommends the attorney route.
Uh, uh, all the research that I've done coincides with exactly what you've said.
Well, that's what he told me and, uh, in all honesty, and, uh, this guy's been in the business, in the energy business, uh, for well over forty years. And, uh, in my conversation with Jim, post my conversation with this guy, uh, Jim's comment to me was, if anybody knows, this guy knows.
Next, next to Jack's race, he would be as good as we can find. I would use for me, when he was there a long time. He advised the legislature.
Sure.
All the time, every year.
Yes.
About increases for different power cuts. He's just about as good.
Yes, sir.
Well, even if we don't, even if we're unsuccessful in mitigating it totally, if we can, uh, you know, if we can negotiate a, uh, decrease in the increase, we'll be, we'll be doing a lot.
Totally agree with you. And that was my conversation with him yesterday that, uh, it, I, I don't know the amount of the actual increase. I've heard different percentages of numbers. I don't know. But let's just say for the sake of conversations, twenty percent, if we can negotiate it down to twelve percent, then we win. And so, or, and everybody, I think, wins.
What's the rationale for the increase?
Uh, they need to make a, they need to make a rate of return on their investment. They need to make, uh, continued upgrades and, and, uh, recoup money that was, um, money that they had to spend, uh, post Hurricane Michael. And so, uh, but I think one of the biggest issues that sticks a lot of people's crawls, they want a percentage of profit uh, on what they, on what they, on what they earn. Sort of guaranteed percentages, when I think that's about eleven, eleven point three, about eleven and a half percent. Is that, uh, guaranteed amount of money that they're looking for. And this rate increase gets them, as I understand it, gets them where they want to be rate wise and guarantees them a rate of return on their money that they want to.
So the Public Service Commission is appointed by the governor, is that right?
He's appointed by the governor.
I think so.
They are.
Okay, and there are no repercussions if they don't look at it and see it our way?
My understanding is not. Uh, uh, my understanding is, and I, I, I want to try to repeat this the right way, that they are very, the Public Service Commission is quite utility friendly. Uh, to, 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 to try and repeat the, that, the way that I have heard it. And, uh, but repercussions if they don't, uh, prudent, I, I doubt they're.
They used to be elected, Dr. Sparks.
They were.
We used to be elected. That one that lived right here on Blue Springs Island.
I'm reading that letter, right, the, the CEO makes two million dollars a year.
Yeah.
I've heard that. I don't, I can't, I can't, uh, I can't, uh, I can't, uh, I've heard that high salaries, bonuses, and, uh, I've heard lots of things, as I'm certain we all have, but, uh, I'm certainly will compensate.
I don't know what he does, but then down, uh, you go down the ladder, you know, they probably get peanuts.
Oh, yeah.
You know, so you add all that money up, I mean, I don't see what part of worth that.
It'll be nice to put them all under oath.
Yeah.
Once it got too long ago.
Sir.
Wasn't very long ago that the rates were increased, right?
At one time, Florida Public Utilities was the cheapest in the state of Florida.
Twenty fourteen, wasn't it?
I only had a saw one time back, I guess, long by due time, they had, you know, a higher rate increase.
Yeah, they're the highest now.
About to be. Uh, again, I'll communicate with, uh, with, uh, your county administrator and, uh, and she will communicate with you. But that's, that's my intent tomorrow, uh, uh, to ask the council to.
They'll be back and vote.
If we, uh, you know, assuming that your commissioners go along with the request to engage the attorney, uh, if we take action to join, uh, the, uh, the effort at our next meeting, would that be two later?
That's two weeks from now. I don't think so. And I can communicate with him, at least I believe the intent going forward will be that we all, but, uh.
We, we don't want to be adverse to any preparation or.
Understand, uh, again, this is all brand new as of yesterday, so, uh.
Would it, would it be, would it be beneficial to, uh, offer a motion to approve this contingent upon the city commission and the school board? Offer a motion that we approve, uh, jointly engaging the attorney uh, with the City of Marianna, school board contingent upon both of those bodies, uh, uh, making that same approval.
I second that.
A motion in a second.
One's coming from.
We'll have a legal, we have a legal fee line item.
And I'll get you the name of the firm. I know the name of the attorney, but the firm name is about that long. Partners in it, so, uh, there's somebody, 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 and somebody, and somebody, and somebody, but I'll, I'll get you. With Robert Sheffel, Robert, Robert Sheffel Wright is the attorney with whom we will be directly working with Sheff Wright, but I'll get you the name.
Any other discussions in the board?
Thank you.
Thank you, William. All in favor?
The last thing that I have is, um, we are passing around our twenty twenty-four annual report. Um, this is something, there were the new commissioners that, uh, we started doing a few years ago. And it's just, um, all the statistics and information that each department was responsible for last year. And so something for you to take, but it's also published on our social media and our website for the citizens to see the work that was accomplished in the last year. So thank you to Mary. It was her first time completing the annual report. She did a really, really beautiful job. So thank you, Mary. And the last thing I have is, I don't know that I still needed decision, but just want to mention, um, probably at the next meeting, we'll have to have a firm decision on the legislative request. A, a firm decision on your direction for the legislative request. Um, because those forms are due in February, I believe. So don't, don't need it today, just mentioning it.
Just as kind of a, a summary of the discussion, uh, the, the legislative request that you had thrown out there, Ms. Daniels, was additional dollars for.
It was for hardening the fire station number five on Highway seventy, uh, one.
And I think Commissioner Branch and Commissioner Westbrook both, uh, had indicated a desire to at least consider, uh, paving roads, paving dirt roads.
Yes, sir.
I will tell you all that I spoke with Alan Sussky about the discussion y'all had. And he said, um, well, first of all, anything in the nature of storm recovery or, uh, you know, resiliency is high on the priority list. But he said, you know, if there are specific road projects, which I know there, there always are, that he would recommend, we kind of identify what those are. And instead of making them through a legislative request, um, still work through our legislators, but to see if we can't get additional funds put into some of these programs that are even earmarked or identified for these road projects.
I guess all y'all know, Mr. Sussky is our lobbyist, right? All right, anybody in that area out there who need to speak again, you're welcome to come forward. Jersey, thank you for coming.
I got a couple of fire.
Okay, go right ahead.
Jason, after we voted, I don't remember exactly, sometime back I brought this up. He's got a business over at Spring Hill, rode his business, but the county owned a lot right below him. Uh, written, proposed to put in a fire station, but it really wasn't available, I guess, or I mean, it's available, but wasn't. It's gonna cost a lot of money to get the groundwork. And I think we approved for him to. 树 and bushes growing up and pine trees, small, they're not real big right now, but he would clean that off to be able to use it. Well, we don't use it. And all he asked is if, if we would let him know when we come to, we'll either do something with it or sell it or whatever, if he got a little crop on it, he could get that off. You know, yeah, the other end, but we did it there for him to maintain it. You know, yeah, the other it, but we did it there for him to maintain and keep it clean. And uh he want to know if I still stand, or he he never got no paperwork. Last I knew, I think he called him, got some information, they said, Sarah, you remember that Jason Hatcher? And uh but he ain't got anything, hadn't heard any more sense, so he just wants to make sure before he goes, cleans all that off and.
This is the property at the corner of Peanut Road and.
It's on, actually, it's on two seventy three, right at. Just before you get the crop.
This is what we were gonna do of the fire station.
You can worry that's right, that's right.
We'll, we'll follow up on it.
Yeah, and uh, well.
I think he needs, we need to finalize the agreement, and I I'll have to ask Lucas, but it sounds like something got stuck with information we need or something.
So I reckon he needs to just wait until he gets finalized with it before he cleans anything off.
I would, I mean, I would, I would recommend he have the agreement in play.
Start cleaning that off, but he asked me, and I said, well, I know, uh, agreed it, and I remember him telling me, I think Sarah Sarah called him about some information or something, and I guess that before it ended up, uh, there, he he wanted to start clearing that off, but it's still. I says, I know we approved it, but you haven't got any paperwork for it, let me fi- find out on the board. And the secret is, he lives on Peanut Road, but he owns property on east and west side. They have a cover pipe going under Peanut Road. He got a, he irrigates over on the east side. He wants to know if he could run and he planning on putting water mons on the west side. If he could run a pipe through that cover, irrigate water mons.
Won't be all right till the man comes along. Boiling the roads.
Yeah. Runs over the pipe.
Right.
I don't have. I have a problem doing that.
I mean, it'd be in case through that pipe, you know, so it's like if it started leaking, it's gonna.
He's gonna run a pipe through the cook, through the cover.
If we take it, he had done that before, I mean, I.
We have, I'm not for him.
I know, but I mean, in in the past.
Yeah, we have done it.
Irrigation pockets.
He might want to put something out when he got something in there, more is coming there, where they will see it for the pipes. For the runner pipe, I see what he said, he's saying there about if if growing up the grass over and he leave the pipe there, they might run over. We won't be responsible for the pipe. You know. And runs over more than, over, we're not responsible, we replaced the pipe.
It's probably been done more unofficially than officially, I don't.
I mean, he 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 wants to know if he can do that, so that's all I know.
So I mean, do you need, is there a motion that we need to?
I I don't have a problem with it.
No.
I'm I'll make a motion to let him, let him put the pipe on and the cover.
I'll bring it back in the session.
It's a. If the moor runs over, they are not liable. If the grass is over there, they didn't see it, they're not.
Run the pipe to his own risk.
That's right.
He needs to do it so he can do it accordingly.
Or a port boy, yeah.
Digging in, put it back in.
If we, if we do anything, I would request that we have a fill out at a minimum right away use permit, since that is what the intent is. And then we could outline whose responsibility is what. I do have maintenance concerns. Um, I have seen them in the past, more often there, nobody asks, they just do it. Um, so I do appreciate him at least touching base with the county beforehand. But if it's the direction of the board to allow these, we will follow right away use.
I I had to say, he call get a permit each time he gonna do it. That way, if somebody calls you and say he complains about it, you can say they got a permit to do that.
That's right.
Amen.
I agree, okay.
You know, I must confess.
Hey, who's second? I made a motion, but.
My lawyer said, you're now in the convention.
I'll say.
All right. They running their own meeting, sir.
And if I could just add, we've located the agreement for Hatcher, and it'll be on the next agenda. It materialized, so it'll be on the next agenda.
Okay.
All right, we going to adjourn one more time.